Here, yes.
Counselor Schleck.
Here.
Counsel President Wolf.
Here.
Youth Counsel Manini.
Here.
Counselor Gudusi.
Here.
Counselor Hu.
Here.
And Mayor Lub.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We are starting this evening. I really appreciate everyone being here at five. If you have food, please feel free to eat, including anyone sitting towards the edge of the table. And I will turn it over to Jill, who will help us facilitate our goal setting.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. I'm going to share my screen and bring up the PowerPoint. So we are in a -- can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. It's hard for me to see individual faces with my camera view, so speaking up is going to be really important if somebody has a question or wants to interrupt me. Hope everybody is doing well tonight. So what I did in order to prepare this was I had a one-on-one meeting with the councilors and just went over the four goals that currently exist and what their thoughts are about them. And I'm just, I know that you've all seen the printout of this in the materials, but I'd like to just go through it to get us, you know, reacquainted with this and then the discussion can ensue, if that's okay. So the current goals are to reduce houselessness, address climate change, modernize and improve city services, and to enhance community safety and access. There were some general comments that don't apply to any one particular goal, and I've just got those captured here. So first of all, that staff is already doing, oops, I'm sorry, staff is doing already a lot, sorry, without additional goals. So having, you know, the four goals or, you know, doing more, people were acknowledging that's already, there's already a lot of work being done. There is going to be a move towards trying to consider a bond, and that, if that goes forward, will be a very heavy lift. So there's a concern about taking on too many goals in addition to that. Also a desire to, you know, to make sure that the council is responding to how the community is evolving. A desire to put in some recognition of the good place that Tigard is to do business and add in some economic and business development aspects to a goal or perhaps a goal. And, you know, another view was that maybe the public would like the city council to have more goals, even if they are just reflecting the work that is already being done, but the goals might help focus efforts. With respect to the houselessness goal, comments that I heard had to do, basically were along the lines of these here. So I think there was something maybe moving towards a consensus of having this be part of a different goal, maybe a more comprehensive goal, such as addressing affordable housing, a recognition that managing the unhoused community is still extremely important and it needs to be balanced with other community interests. And also a question about whether or not there can be, you know, clear metrics and timeline to measure how this is, you know, how this is going. And then to see whether or not there could be some ways to combine climate and houselessness in affordable housing or some other kind of goal like that. Comments on the climate change goal, they range from stay the course to it could probably be rolled into other goals. So for example, prioritizing carbon responsibility could be part of the modernization goal. You know, having, educating homeowners on how to make their homes more climate friendly, those kinds of things. Or it could be combined with houselessness and perhaps called something else. Modernizing and improving city services, a question about the library roof. There's a concern about the library roof and what needs to be done with that and should that be added to the modernization list. For a couple of councilors, safety and modernization were the two most important goals. And a question about whether or not this goal ought to already also include Tyler, which is the big computer conversion that you're doing. And then the enhanced community safety and access, you know, do our community members still feel that they can access services, especially communities of color? That's very important. How Boulevard, there's a council is going to play a role in that as it's, you know, as those negotiations go forward. And again, as mentioned before, a view that safety would be a really high priority, not only community safety, but, you know, having safe bike lanes and walking lanes and pedestrian areas, things like that. City staff and recognition is doing a lot here. Council supports that. And then also an idea that we could be really expanding our public education around fentanyl, because a lot of kids are being harmed and wondering whether or not the city could have a role in expanding communications to parents around that. So just wanted to, these are just a couple of ideas that were floated and I just wanted to share those. So they go around the idea of having a statement about what Tigard should be and then having bullet points underneath that. So for example, building more accessible and resilient Tigard, creating and maintaining a community where people live, work, and belong by, modernizing the city, creating climate resiliency, safety, secure and inviting streets and public spaces, and affordable housing and decreasing houselessness. Another way that that was addressed or another kind of thought about that is, again, building a resilient Tigard, strengthening the community, the infrastructure ecosystems for future generations. So community preparedness, sustainable infrastructure, biodiversity, ecosystem protection, economic stability and equity, and collaboration and innovation. So those are the ideas. That's sort of what I was hearing from the council. There is, I think there is some consensus around the idea of maybe consolidating some of the goals. And it could be that these last two screens here are ways to do that. But I just wanted to make, you know, this is what I heard and I wanted to maybe turn it back over to you to facilitate the discussion. I think it would be probably easier there. I don't know if there's any questions about any of this for me?
Yeah, we can start to see, are there any questions about the information that Jill presented us? I'm seeing shaking heads, Jill.
Okay, all right. I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing.
We can focus on, I guess, those last two slides. What, how do people feel about, I feel like they're generally fairly similar. Some changes in verbiage and perhaps just some specificity in the second one. I think the first one's a little more general. I know, five o'clock is weird for all of us. Counselor Shaw.
Ditto on it being weird, but so glad to see everybody and happy birthday to one of our fellow councilors. I definitely like the combination of the two. And first, I should thank the council and also Jill and those who are participants for all the hard work getting us to where we are tonight. And I agree, we don't need to copy and paste, but I like the idea of nine being a little bit more specific. Maybe there's too many bullets under there. Maybe a couple can be combined, but I think that's kind of a good starting place. From just what I've heard from the community is that they want to be resilient, they want to strengthen, they want the infrastructure. We know the bond's important. We know the innovation, the Tyler is going to be vital. And as we look down the road, housing, climate can be what we're preparing for the generations to come. So that one resounded with me.
My only feeling about Tyler is I think we're on the down slope and this is a two-year goal. I know, knock on whatever we can knock on. And I think, I don't know that we would necessarily need to call it out as far as that's just sort of a piece of like modernizing our city, because it's been such a focus for the last four years. I don't, I just don't think it needs the same emphasis, although we continue the support that we have. Yeah, Counselor Schleck?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council and Jill, for sort of the pre-work that led to this presentation. I guess I just want to sort of share what my high-level thought process about the goals are, and you all can do what you want with them. I think, I went back to a lot of my campaign material from the last election and thought, okay, what did I tell the voters I was going to do? And then how can I try and incorporate those into the goals that we have? You know, that seems like good democratic process. And I also took the feedback in that perhaps we have four goals currently and perhaps we want to narrow it down to two or three. One of them may be being exclusively focused on the bond measure. So with that in mind, thinking maybe three goals, one with a bond, one focused on the bond measure, and then two more that's more open for interpretation. What two goals or themes at least would I want to see those goals focus around? And the two that came to mind are growth and safety. So when I think of growth, I think of responsible management of growth, and I think that allows us to touch on a number of really important things the city is doing, like development of affordable housing, improving livability, such as with our Parks and Recreations programs, economic development efforts to make sure that Tigard has a great economy, a great place to run your business, and also modernization of services so we can continue to provide services to our growing city. And then safety allows us to focus on things like facilities, transportation development. We could even roll the bond measure under there, emergency preparedness. As well as policing and public works, I feel like since police, the police department and our public works team are the majority of our headcount, I'd love to see a way for our council goals to really engage those areas of our city team, just to make sure that we are, we have goals that everybody on our team can contribute to directly. So those are sort of my high-level thoughts coming into this conversation that I'd like to share.
Additional thoughts from Counselor? Yes, Counselor Hu?
Thank you. The way I approach this is more of a thinking what kind of outcome I would like to see in the next two years and not focusing on the goal. So maybe if we can write down, you know, what we all want to see accomplished in the next two years and we see them on a whiteboard or virtual board, then maybe we can, you know, consolidate some of them under certain goals. So maybe we can come up with two or three, as Counselor Schleck's mentioned, and not missing anything else, because I don't want the number of goal we have to dictate, you know, like what we want to see accomplished. So maybe, maybe for me at least, it makes more sense that we work backwards, you know, see what we want to see in the next two years and then somehow consolidate some of those goals, outcomes, and maybe in under one big two or three goals. So that's maybe, that's just my thought at this point. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. We can start with you. So you said you were thinking about it. What would you like to see in the next two to three years?
Well, I think, hopefully it's not controversial. I would like to see voters support the bond measure. And I would like to see city staff finishing, I know that currently planning, seeking feedback from residents on what area of the city they would like to see safety improvement for streets. And I would really like staff to finish that. And I would like the city to really focus on the affordability aspect of River Terrace 2.0. And I would like, Hall Boulevard is tricky, right? Because I don't know how much control the city has at this point. So, yeah. So that's just top of my head right now. So I'm sure there are more. I will get back to it after I read my notes. Sorry, I was still eating dinner, so.
And now, thinking, oh, go ahead, Jill.
I'm so sorry for interrupting. I just wanted to jump in and say, so I've started to take notes. I don't know if it's even visible. I'm sharing my screen and taking notes with a Word document. Is that even visible to anybody there?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay. And then Counselor Hu just said affordability of river, and I didn't catch the second part of that. River Terrace 2.0. Okay. Thank you so much. Sorry about that.
I just want to say, I don't think Hall has to be in our council goals. I think it's a legislative priority and at this point, our point, like our purpose is advocacy and going after dollars, which I think we can do with our legislative agendas and it doesn't, because we've been living that goal for a while, but it's, you know, never been, I think, truly called out that way. So I'm comfortable. Is everyone comfortable continuing, I think, with that rather than like its own specific called-out goal? Yeah, okay. Yeah, Counselor Robbins?
Thank you. And thank you, Jill, for taking the time to talk to all of us and take the notes and put everything together. It's been very helpful to kind of help me get a good idea of what I want to say. I do like Counselor Schleck's idea of having a couple large overarching goals, then we can break down to smaller ones. I think that growth and safety are two good kind of categories. I would add to that something to include our existing residents and our existing stuff, because growth sounds like new, 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 and change, change, change. And we have a lot of people who are pretty happy with where we live, but still want to be taken care of. And so the word that came to mind, which I don't think is the greatest word, but is improvement. Maintenance doesn't sound good, but something to taking care of our current residents. Mayor Lub, do you have a good idea?
I do have one. I've been sitting, as soon as he was talking, opportunity.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
I think opportunity encompasses the opportunities that we have for future residents and then increasing the opportunity for current residents and businesses. So I like that word.
I do. I think that's a good idea. And regarding the safety, just to back up, because my main thing that I wanted to include, it didn't entirely get captured, I think, Jill, in your notes. Of course, you all know it was the thing about fentanyl and schools, what she said. But it's more than just working with our schools, because our schools do have Narcan available and they do have a lot of the information for the students. But I would love to see as part of our safety, an expansion of our Narcan availability, perhaps with training for local businesses and people who live in the community who maybe know about Narcan but are too afraid to even consider having it or using it, or why should they have it, or who could possibly have it. So maybe a training program with business owners or outreach to adults, not just parents, but adults, because anyone could overdose. It could be your aunt, it could be your neighbor, and just having that availability. I would love to see that involved, because safety, safety, and it does go under the the bullet point that Jill had that said making our streets and community, public areas safe. Because if you're, you know, we can't necessarily keep you safe in your home, but if you're out at the park or at the mall or something and you see something happen, have we educated our residents in ways that they can help everyone else?
Counsel President Wolf?
Yeah, so a couple things. But first, I'd like to address Counselor Robbins' interest. And I don't want to get too much in the weeds, but Communities That Care, which Counselor Robbins, Communities That Care is driven from TTSD, but it truly is about a whole community. It's particularly around drug impact. So what I don't want to do is kind of double up programs that maybe there's an opportunity to, how do we ensure we're engaged and we impact that? And I'm happy to talk further with you about that, but Mayor Lub sits on that. City Manager Reimer did. I think he's continuing that just as a personal interest and passion. But I want to be mindful of creating different things that might actually already align with some programs that we've just started, that process. And again, happy to talk more about that. But I'd like to leverage that kind of early partnership that we've started. So. So yeah, I, when I was listening to Counselor Schleck, and thank you, because I feel like you had lined that up, I want to, what I appreciated about our four is I felt like the words maybe weren't, yeah, I'm terrible about that, sorry, crisp or clear, but I, in a way, I felt like I knew the category. They made sense. They were kind of well-defined. And then we drilled down from there. I like Counselor Hu's idea to go back to outcomes. Let's focus on the outcomes and roll up. So if I look at what's on the board, if you will, I care a lot about affordable housing. I care a lot about our opportunities for infill or doing more around density. I'm not, I'm a little concerned to be so focused on affordability in River Terrace 2.0, because I think we all might have a conversation and debate about what does affordability mean in River Terrace 2.0. But for the city as a whole, I'm very interested in affordable housing. So just an idea to make that maybe a little broader than just specific. Clearly, that's our major development over the next couple of years. But totally agree with the bond measure as well. Got feedback. I just think, you know, tonight we're going to talk about Safe Streets for All. I think that's a tremendous opportunity for us. And heard a lot about, we continue to get community emails. So I don't know what that looks like, but just that ongoing safety, it fits well under that. So maybe it's just ditto from me that we focus on the safety in our streets locally that we can control. And I also agree, and I shared that with Jill, on reducing houselessness, how we fold that in and really be good partners with just compassion as they launch a much larger facility, but also just around affordable housing. So I feel like I just kind of rambled all those things, but I appreciate Jill just kind of adding some thoughts. But I would say safety around streets. I also had some feedback around lighting. feedback around lighting as well, that our streets are a little dark, but I also don't know if that's kind of a tactical approach, that that's a different conversation. But again, goes back to safety. So I'm kind of, yeah, landing with what Jill has there, but we have to acknowledge, yeah, the houselessness, but maybe in a different way. So, clears mud. Thank you.
Councillor Gudusi?
Thank you. I would throw everything under two different sort of buckets, umbrellas. One of them ends up being expansion, the other one consolidation, because those, that's sort of the dichotomy that we're finding ourselves in Tigard. So along the expansion, that ends up being the growth, the affordable housing, modernization and accessibility. But then when we're looking internally, so within with that consolidation, it ends up being the safety, community preparedness, ecosystem protection and economic stability. So it's sort of acknowledging everything that's currently being done while bringing down the overall number and focus to these sort of two big things. What are we doing to help the city grow and what are we doing to help the city get better?
Youth councillor Mindani?
I wonder if we could like consider having like a literal number of how many goals we want to have, because I feel like two isn't a whole lot. And I just know, just like based off like, I feel like a lot of cities would sort of look at the main goals and not really dive into it. And the goals really represent what we're interested in. And I certainly think we should have one focused on climate. I'd really like the one creating climate resilience. That feels very hopeful to me in a way. And one focused on either affordable housing or houselessness or something along that. I, I don't know why, but I just feel like having two buckets, it's, would everything else just be like bullet points under? Is that still very easily accessible?
Sorry, I was writing. Councillor Hu?
Okay, I found my notes. So hopefully I can be more articulate. So one of my big bullet thing is consistent with what youth councillor mentions, addressing housing and homelessnessness. And under that, I, I, I'm more, I'm broader than just River Terrace 2.0. I said, develop a comprehensive, inclusive housing strategy that addresses both the immediate, immediate needs of the homeless and long-term affordable housing solutions, ensuring stable housing opportunity for all residents. So that's where I landed on housing. It's, and I just happened to mention River Terrace 2.0 because that's something that the staff is doing anyway. So I just hope that, you know, as we, going forwards, the planning of River Terrace 2.0, we constantly, we'll constantly keep in mind of the affordability aspect of it. As councillor, councillor president Wolf mentioned, one of the discussion I think we should have at the city level is what is considered affordable. The city, the state finally released their first ever housing need analysis last December and they, they mentioned, they point out that Tigard needs, when the, you know, in order to keep up with demand, Tigard needs 8,500 new homes in the next 20 years. And they also break it down into four income levels. And, and you know, the majority of them are for high-income households. But there is, there is also a big bucket of housing need that, that's, that's required or that's needed for, you know, low-income housing, half families, and those are subsidized housing. So my whole point of raising River Terrace 2.0 is, and I don't know if it's too early or too much work for staff in the next two years, is we need to start thinking about, you know, is River Terrace 2.0 enough to provide that 8,500 homes in the next 20 years? Or do we need to look inward to see, you know, we have, we get rid of single-house zoning way before the state required. And from what I understand is that it's not getting any traction. I'm not sitting a lot, I'm not seeing a lot of accessory dwelling unit being built or a lot of cottage cluster being built. So, you know, and I don't know why, well, I have some idea of why, but I don't know why exactly. And I'm just not sure if River Terrace 2.0 would be enough. You know, some people may not like that. We may have to look at, you know, making our urban growth boundary bigger. And I know that's controversial, but if we really need to provide that additional 8,500 homes in the next 20 years, do we need to look into that as well? So it's just a lot unknown right now. And I, I would just really appreciate that in the next two years, we have a better understanding of a housing future, you know, of how, how are we going to provide that 8,500 unit that's predicted that we will need in the next 20 years. So that's where I am in the housing bucket, for the lack of better word, so.
Thank you. It feels like a lot of the discussion ends up going around kind of the ideas in the eight slide. You know, modernizing our city. I think, I think, are we all on the same page that the bond absolutely like is one of the priorities in the next two years? Okay, checkbox. We have progress. And, but maybe instead of like creating climate resiliency, it's more about like the opportunity environment we were talking about, just about support, like how do we create that opportunity environment for people to live and thrive and work? The safety aspect is another part of it and really housing has been a big topic. So it feels like that, given the first round of discussion, and I guess, it feels like that's where the buckets are sort of landing. Does that feel accurate? Yes, youth councillor Mindani?
Sorry, so climate resilience is like including like climate change and focusing on that? Sorry, I've.
Yeah, I think the way that we, well, I guess we can talk about this more specifically. Do we have an interest in embedding climate in everything that we do or calling it out specifically? I think that becomes the question, right? Is it a specific goal or is it one of the tenants we sort of live by, given our community promise, right? Like, is it addressed there and it's something that we can use in everything that we do? Councillor Shaw?
Yeah, I would say it's embedded in everything we do. It's concrete, should be foundational. I also would, and this will probably get controversial, I would say the same with housing, because we don't, we have a difference of opinion what affordable is. I too read the report, thank you councillor Hu, with the state, and it's at all income levels. There's that 8,500 that's needed. So I think it's going to be very challenging to call out specifics. And so I do like the idea of councillor Schlack with the two ideas that he had mentioned with the growth and opportunity, because that's growth, it's opportunity at all different levels. A little concerned about the infill because that tends to then go to our concrete, our neighborhoods that have been established. And we know that infill in particular of late has been controversial, but that's also opportunity. So I like the idea of like having that growth and opportunity budget kind of bucket. And then underneath that, just ensuring that there's components of climate and also of the housing. And then safety would be the same, because you could have the same climate resiliency within safety, because that also points to ensuring that we're safe if there's an earthquake, if there's fires. And then I had one other point, which I can't remember, so I'll turn it back over to you, mayor. Councillor Schlack?
Thank you, mayor. Councillor Shaw stole my thunder. I agree with her viewpoint. I'm a fan of the embedding, a focus on climate and environment in sort of our, our larger skill goals for the reasons that councillor Shaw said.
Councillor Robbins?
I agree. I think that we have several foundational values that we have and climate is one of those. Affordability could be considered one of those. That will be throughout multiple parts of our goals. And so calling it out every time, it kind of mixes things up some. So I think we could just use the, the climate as, it should just be, be there within the goals. I do think that several of us are kind of talking about the same thing. It's just a matter of nomenclature. You know, councillor Schlack started out with growth and safety. And then I said improvement, but we kind of settled on opportunity. So those three, growth, opportunity and safety. Councillor Gudusi was similar with expansion and consolidation. We, I would advocate to not use consolidation because sometimes we don't, consolidation to me kind of makes things smaller sometimes, or it, I know that's not really the definition, but I think some people could interpret it that way. And so maybe opportunity, again, could work and then growth and expansion are very similar. And then again, safety, it's nice to have safety as something, because that is a goal, right? And that's part of what we're doing. We're the stewards of the city, watching out for the residents and the citizens. So, so making sure there is safety and we oversee public works and the police department, which is again, safety. So I, I think we're getting close with at least our three large categories. We just have to settle on nomenclature naming.
This is Jill. Can I just check in briefly? I've been changing the notes as you've been talking. Am I tracking well here?
So, so in my mind, it's instead of growth, it's opportunity. So it's opportunity. So the three would be bond, opportunity and safety.
Okay. So that, all right. Am I there now? And do we get rid of this?
Do we? I'm looking around the room. Does that feel like it encompasses the three buckets we're talking about with just generally those three? The bond, opportunity and safety. I think councillor Robbins wanted to say something first.
That, I have to think, because that, that wasn't my understanding, obviously, since I, you know, completely missed the bond part, because I was kind of putting bond under growth. You know, it kind of does encompass growth, it encompasses safety. So I wasn't putting that as a separate goal, or goal category, because it kind of doesn't fit with the other goals, because it's just the bond, right? And, and the other ones are categories. That's why I was looking at growth. But I guess opportunity could be growth also. But that's very, very broad. So I don't know.
Well, I think the comment was made, right? Growth was very specifically about new areas and talking about residents. My take on opportunity was providing affordable opportunities for people who want to move into Tigard, providing opportunities for people who want to grow their business, those sorts of things. I think creating the opportunity environment for the, our, our sub-goals to thrive. I, for me, the, like having the bond is something separate. I know it feels like two broad categories and then a very specific thing, but I think it is a very specific thing. And it's something that I think we need to call out to the community that says, this is so important to us, that it is one goal that, you know, does have sub-goals of including the community, figuring out what the plan is, passing it and building it. And then I, I think safety talks about a lot of those different things, especially the safety in our streets that we've been talking about and safety improvements. So those were my, that is how I see the three buckets. Councillor Schlack?
Can I just make a quick comment? So if that is the case, then Jill, on your notes, the, the bond needs to have one, one less indent. It should be at the same level as opportunity.
There's also bond measure at the bottom. Yeah, so just, yeah, excellent. Thank you. Councillor Schlack?
Thank you, mayor. Yes, I, I agree with your, your assessment to this point. I, boiling it down to two, I totally agree. We could fit the bond measure under one of these two sort of themes, but I think the bond measure is such a, a big lift. It's going to be the big challenge of this council for the next two-year period that I think it's worth calling out as its own goal, since we're going to be dedicating a lot of time and energy and resources to that specific task at hand. As far as opportunity, safety go, I think what I like about those, and why I pitched it originally, is I think it allows for a very holistic view of how a lot of different policy decisions we make interact with each other, as opposed to having very specific things, like this is our task on housing, this is our task on climate. Those feel very point-solution-ish, as opposed to like, what's our holistic vision of where we're going? To mayor Lu's point about opportunity, I'd like to just make sure that, under the opportunity notes, that we include economic development, because that, I think we're, the consensus is we really want to make sure that we have good relationships with our businesses, that we're supporting them, that we're bringing jobs to Tigard and keeping jobs in Tigard. And then I'd like to make a pitch for something specifically related to livability, thinking about like parks, connectedness and stuff like that. Because it's not, from my perspective on the campaign trail, something that kept coming up in my head was, it's not enough just to build houses for people to live. We want to make sure it's actually a community that people want to live in. And I want to make sure that that element is not missed in, in the idea of opportunity.
Council president Wolf?
Thank you councillor Schlack. Thank you councillor Schlack. You actually covered a lot of the things that I was interested in as well, is economic opportunity. And I think the parks, in terms of any deserts that we're working on or future opportunities. So that wraps that up well. I, under safety, I still think there's an opportunity to lift, lift up our public safety, our police officers and their presence. We've invested a lot in additional positions out in the public. I think that's still a need and possibly an interest to see that more in the triangle. So I don't want to get that lost. And the biggest thing I wanted to maybe ask the question, or I am going to ask the question, on the bond, I would really like to ask what our why is. Our why isn't a bond. Our why is facilities resiliency, whatever it is. But bond measure, successfully pass a bond measure, number one bullet, but our why is not the bond measure. Our why is what that bond creates. So whatever the words are, I'm failing at my words. That would be my advocacy, is that's what the bullet is.
I will add that I think we're just using it as shorthand right now. And I fully expect the staff to, when they sort of take, and Jill to take all of our thoughts, that it doesn't just say bond measure check. Like we, we do a much better verbiage job.
Okay, fabulous. That's what I heard. So I wanted to push back that, yes, it is a bond, but I wanted, but those words are important.
Yes.
Right? So if staff wants to go off. And I guess my final thing is, when we did this two years ago, we did have the luxury of the day working side-by-side staff. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to, you guys are, you know, listening, processing in your own heads, going yay, or, I'd love to get some feedback. I think that's really important. You all had that opportunity two years ago and I'd love to hear it. Yeah.
Please come to the table. We have, we can bring more chairs. Please join us. Seriously, come on up. Come on. I mean it.
I can pass the mic.
Not everybody all at once. Thank you, chief.
And maybe mayor, in the interim, we can also just talk about housing, because it still says just affordable housing, but there's so much other categories, but.
Yeah, I, I want to start by hearing from the city team on what you've heard first. So assistant city manager, Trich, would you like to volunteer as tribute?
Thank you very much. I am really encouraged by hearing a continued commitment to safety, affordability and access. I think we've heard that from our community quite a bit. And it also aligns with what we've said is important at the state and federal level as well. There's a lot of great work that I think is part of our, our regular activities, which isn't to say it's not worth highlighting. I will acknowledge that it is my belief that Tigard is a leader in housing and in creating affordable housing and a variety of housing products, keeping people in their homes and so on. So we can certainly include it and I hope we get good marks. And similar with safety. I think you've, you've heard already our commitment to safety on the roadways. And so if it's, if it's helpful to include it here in goals, I, I think it's something that we'll continue to do well. For the facility, I really appreciate what you said, council president, that we are looking to deliver reliable and resilient. to deliver a reliable and resilient facility. And really, my, I'm drawn to those words, just because it's something that we want to continue to be a stable and reliable beacon of public service for our community on the blue sky days and the dark sky days. And so it's something that's, I think, really important. And then finally, my last comment is, I also really appreciate the consideration for the community and what their needs are. So what is the services, what are the services that we provide? And how are we demonstrating that we're listening to what their needs are? And so a nod to affordability and safety, I think, fits in that bar too. I do think, sorry, one more thing, that climate is becoming a part of what we're doing naturally anyway. And I hope that you're seeing that in the items that we bring forward, that we are considering sustainability, considering the impact. That's something that, if you'd like to, for us to flesh out more of, we can do that. And in all things, it doesn't have to be a goal for you to ask us to provide information. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Jill, where it says bond measure, can you change that to deliver reliable and resilient facility?
Thank you.
Who would like to go next?
I'll start picking you off.
I'll go ahead, Mayor. Emily really did a nice job of, you know, encompassing what we do to try and support the community, I mean, citywide, right? One of the things that I hear constantly when I'm out in the community talking with the people that live here, the people that come here for work or come here to play, is they're talking about, one, the affordability. One of the reasons they choose Tigard is because it is among the most affordable in the suburban areas of Portland, especially in Washington County. So they like that piece of it. They also, we also hear the piece about safety, both on both sides of it, right? They like that it's a safe community, but then they also are asking for more. Street safety, sidewalk connectivity, things like that. Those are critical components of that. We don't need to talk about Hall Boulevard because that does, I mean, there's so many challenges with that roadway, and we all know the reasons why. Another thing that we hear about, or I hear about too, is the library. People love our library, right? And so they're talking about the things that matter the most to them. So giving a nod to what our community expects from us as a city is, I think, valuable for us to keep in mind as we're, as we're working towards council's goals. Because that's something that we use, that's the lens we use, is what is the community expecting from us as the city government to help support them with in this community? So as I think about what's been talked about tonight, I see most all of that up there, really supporting what this community expects from their government, from the city of Tigard as the government. So I think as we think about it like that, if we continue to build on those, that's what we will try to deliver to this community, is what really serves our community the best. And all these things do, in different ways and in different capacities. So, and goals are aspirational, right? So they don't have to have that narrow, narrow scope. It can give us something to really shoot for. You want to make it something that's kind of a challenge to get there, but isn't so far away that you can't actually reach it. That's, you know, when we talk about goals on like a personal level or a professional level in the Police Department, I don't want to do something that's like required to keep somebody's certification, right? I want to give them something that's a challenge. Give them something that gives an opportunity for growth. I think that's what we have as an opportunity here, is what can we reach for to continue to make Tigard an even greater place for people to want to come and live and work and play here in this community? And I think that we're hitting, we're notching into those with what we're talking about tonight. So, just some thoughts that I've been having as we've been talking about it.
So I'm going to say ditto, because I won't repeat exactly the same things that have happened, but there's just one thing that I wanted to highlight and emphasize, because I agree with everything that's been said so far from Emily and Chief. Specifically looking at the reliable and resilient facilities, I think, you know, the terminology of changing it rather than just the bond measure to reliable facilities, I think that's very key and important as we are looking into some of the facility challenges that we have and we're facing, and you'll be hearing about shortly during the Budget Committee process. You know, our facilities are the main hubs of how our services are delivered to the community. Things like the library, the library roof that was mentioned earlier, that's a key part of it too. There are more things than just the library roof, though, that are involved in the centers that are for the community. So just want to highlight, I greatly appreciate the focus on making that a little bit more broad.
I could say ditto again, but, no. A couple of items I would probably elaborate on is, as we look at safety and we talk about including streets, safety amongst the infrastructure, being able to emphasize that as we start trying to look and fund for various projects like our actual streets and all that, that is a key element to it. And being able to go to our goals to acknowledge that infrastructure is kind of important, and the abilities to improve it as a goal we set out is important. And again, we've touched on affordable housing. It is something that I feel in my past experiences, that Tigard's been really great about identifying what both the, you know, capital A and lowercase a affordable housing looks like, and being able to navigate that. So I do appreciate, I also appreciate seeing the economic development component of it and being able to maybe specify and be able to elaborate on how that is a key element to the opportunities that we could give for our future and existing residents.
Thanks for the opportunity to join you tonight. The only thing I'll add is, you know, for Public Works, we talk about just the, our focus every day is just on the core services that the community relies on, right? The utilities, the street system, the park system, all of that good stuff. And, you know, for us to be able to provide those services, there's a few foundational elements that we need. One of them is, you know, just reliable technology. And so over the last several years, as you know, we've been investing in a system that will help us more, and that was a big lift, and, you know, that was a good goal to have. We rely on adequate facilities. And so that's why we, you know, have that one up there right now, because we've, the city is in need of better facilities and taking care of our facilities, and that should continue to be a focus. And even beyond the Public Works Police project, there will be a need to continue to take care of existing facilities and ask the question, well, what's next? The library was mentioned, you know, that is a project, that is a repair that needs to be done on that great facility. Let's see. And then the other things we rely on, police, we're more outward-facing elements of the city. We rely on central services within the walls here to help support, you know, so making sure that, you know, all of those central services have what they need to get their work done. That's it for me. Thanks.
Yeah.
Good evening. Ditto to everything else that was said, but I will just, as the person who was leading the reduced houselessness goal, I'll just step into that one just a little bit. I really appreciate council's, I'm looking at both sides of that equation. We've done a lot to increase capacity in our shelter program, but that's only one side. And this focus on affordable housing and increasing our housing supply, I think is a really great benefit to our community. And I really appreciate Council President talking about the partnership with Just Compassion. And I'd just like to expand that, that if we're continuing to keep houselessness as a small bullet point on this list, that we talk about our partnerships beyond just Just Compassion, but with our service, nonprofit service providers and our SHS through both Metro and the county. Thank you, Council.
Rob, Shelby, anything to add? Rob, welcome to your first council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't expect to participate since I'm seven days into this position, but.
We like to throw you in the deep end.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Having watched from afar, living and serving many years in Beaverton, I've always respected and admired how Tigard gets things done. And the how is very important. And I can see that as you go forward, there are a lot of things like infrastructure, housing, retail, economic development. But I also see that the quality of people the city has hired and the forward-looking hires are critically important to how we serve the community and how the community is invited in to participate. That is so critical to the quality of interaction with residents, that residents may disagree with us, may disagree with you, but the fact that we promote civility and people that can communicate and serve and get the job done is so critical. There are great minds to build buildings, build roads. The other thing that I would consider looking at, there's strong traditional residential development. And I'm not putting River Terrace in a form, I'm not trying to do that. But there are other areas around the city, you have two urban renewal districts, that sit next to retail and opportunities to promote the economy. And you look at the downtown area, and I'm talking broader downtown, lots of opportunity to make the businesses stronger and also have a higher quality of living in this city. I mean, there are a lot of opportunities here. And the other, the Triangle area, again, golden opportunities, the council's looking at these kinds of things. And that's what's going to take this city forward to have, build a better base and to be a quality place to live, not just the way it is today, but go to that next tier. There's so many wonderful things that have been done in Tigard, but there's a lot more to do. And I think with the foundation that's been built and with the eye to hiring the right people, you'll be able to do that over the years and provide the level of service that I know you all want and that you expect of us. So for my roughly six months here, I'm excited about your starting point, but the journey is not one step, it's a thousand.
Anything, Shelby, to add? You can just say ditto. You know, I really appreciate the ditto's, right? Like, it helps us understand that all of you are on the same page, also with what we're talking about. And so I think we've talked a lot about that opportunity bucket as far as big A and little a affordable housing, and maybe we should do that to address both of them, to add. Jill, can you also add little a affordable housing as well? Because it does, it means two different things. That's the first thing I always ask when people say affordable housing, I go, which do you mean? What are we talking about so we're all on the same page? But talking about climate goals embedded, I don't, is that, I don't know that that's something that we, we can just go ahead and, I think, perhaps erase that because that was a discussion topic, but it was, it's embedded in everything that we do. Economic development, thank you for adding the urban development and the Triangle and downtown, and the livability as far as our parks and all of those sorts of things. I'd like for us to talk a little bit more about the safety topic. Thank you, Council President Wolf, for bringing up especially that Narcan is perhaps happening in other areas. And I sort of think about, you know, what the city lane is, and we can certainly support it, but I don't know that that is something that we would lead, and I would recommend that we remove that bullet point specifically from the safety topic. Is that, yeah?
Mayor, if I may, just as a point of reference for council and for the community, all of our police officers carry Narcan. So they all have it available to them, and it's used pretty regularly. It's commonly in the schools, all of the paramedics carry it. A lot of our community providers also have them in their facilities. So it's pretty widely available in the community, especially in the areas where we would be most likely to see an incident where Narcan may be needed. So just as a point of reference for council for that, it's, there are a lot of places that you would probably expect to see it, that it is available.
Thank you. Counselor Robbins, did you want to add something?
I do.
Oh, yep, we'll get you a mic.
Chief, I appreciate that. And I feel like my idea has been kind of taken over by Jess Narcan, and that's really only a part of it. It's more also just educating the public on some of the dangers with opioids these days, and maybe that is not the lane that the city needs to be in. I did briefly, quickly look up the communities that care, and that is part of Tigard, Dirt the Tide. Just to clarify, that is solely for underage drug use. So it's not, those are the goals of that program. So it's not talking about adults as well, and adults are also at risk. But I got it out there on the record, and I'm fine with, you know, it doesn't have to be specifically Narcan, but there is part of, safety isn't just roads and crime and, you know, I did look up the goals from this last year, and it's all very kind of specific, infrastructure isn't the right word, but very specific physical things. And there is more to safety than that. And I think with the prevalence of drug use abounds all over, including in Tigard, some sort of education might be applicable. Now, whether or not it goes in our goals is up for debate, and that's fine.
I would perhaps propose then, maybe if Chief is comfortable with it, that we plan maybe an awareness week around some sort of national thing that's already happening that you and I can piggyback off, and with, working with Counsel Robbins to perhaps get an educational campaign out there. So it's not a specific goal, but it's something that perhaps the Chief and I can commit to to help do that. Because I agree, livability and safety isn't just those physical things, but I don't know that it's necessarily something that the council has to address on that level. Chief?
Yeah, I could check and see what might be available. Off the top of my head, I just don't know. But there's probably some sort of drug awareness week that we could, that we could boost, that the Police Department, the city as a whole can support. We could do some social media campaigns in addition to, you know, some other maybe physical activity. And one of the things that's really, that can really be helpful is when council boosts those things on your own social media accounts. So let me do a little bit of research, Mayor, and then I can get back to you and council on what might be available that would maybe be appropriate to, you know, to head down for us. Yeah. You bet.
I think Counselor Shaw's about to jump out of her seat.
No, I love this conversation. The chamber runs with city's assistance and funding, the Small Business Sustainability Fund. And it could be interesting to add that as an element to businesses to be potentially trained. And so there's already a vehicle for that, and it would be one additional item that could be added. So just something for thought.
Thank you. So I think, yes, Jill, we can go ahead and erase that specific topic. I would like to talk a little bit more about the public safety and expand on that, but I also want to add a couple of things up there based on what I heard the city team talk about, that perhaps gives us a starting point to talk more specifically about safety. And that is street safety, sidewalk connectivity, and I'm going to slow down so Jill can type. Nothing like pressure of people watching you type. So it would be street safety, and then sidewalk connectivity would be its own bullet. And then maintain infrastructure was discussed. Reliable technology. And adequate facilities. Those were the bullet points I heard from the city team. Yes. And so Counselor Wolf, I just, I want to ask you a little bit more about the public safety so I understand. You know, we were recently successful with another levy, and thinking in the goals of the next two years, you were talking about the size of the police, or can you help me better understand?
So it's in part some feedback I got. I was thinking about the model that we've been able to expand. Of course, you know, Officer Orth is amazing, we've been able to expand that. And so I think of that model, how much of that is impact as we grow in the Triangle? Or Chief, you would know best, right? Are there spots that we more effectively engage? And just that presence? Because just some of the feedback that I've received is Tigard's in a good place, that's important. And so the focus, very much so two years ago, was about the local option levy. So maybe, you know, back to the Chief's comment, being present and doing what he does is what he does. So does it need an aspirational goal around that? But I just heard that feedback, and it was certainly not negative, but I think that yes, and we, we want that presence. So I'm not articulating a particular goal, but I think, you're nodding, Chief, so I'll let you respond.
Yes, and, and so I agree. When, when you talk about public safety, it's much more broad than police officers on the street and even lighting, you know, making you feel comfortable walking down the sidewalk. Public safety is, is also a perception of how you feel about the community as a whole, right? And so to your point about, does it mean we need more police officers? Maybe, but that's, that isn't, that isn't always the answer, right? So I think what's important for us as, you know, a governing body to, to recognize is there's so many components to what public safety means, and they all look slightly different. So could it be more officers to do the same type of work that, that Officer Orth and Officer Tillotson are doing? Maybe. But it also, when we do, start doing our bike patrols again in the spring, the feedback we will get from the community is phenomenal every year. Thank you so much for being here. And we do it every year. It's like we just started again, but nobody likes riding in, well, I don't know, there are a few people that like to ride in the cold and the wet. But not very many people enjoy riding in the cold and the wet, so we generally focus those efforts when it's that time of year. So it's those types of things that are public safety related as well. So focusing on certain areas to, to deliver that level of, of safety is something that we do intentionally anyway. And we're constantly monitoring where we're at with, with staffing, and when the time's appropriate to feel like maybe we need to ask for something additional, then council will hear that from, from us at that time, yeah.
Thank you, Chief. Because I was even thinking, as I reflect on the initial polling we got around facilities, I think there was some touchpoints on public safety. So I always think that that's top of mind. And so that's kind of my goal strategy and not to, to advocate if it's additional officers, but to kind of what the Chief said. And like, you're right, you're probably, as officers are back on their bikes, in that presence, that sense. And to do that in a thoughtful way, I know when we talked a lot about our camps, Chief, I was just so impressed with, just with dignity, with respect, and how we connect with our community. So I, I'm not coming up with a great bullet, but I just think there's an essence there that's important. But maybe that's just what we do day to day. And the only other thing that I wanted to throw out that I don't want to add because we're getting a list, but, but for two years in the budget process, we talked a lot about this resource of a navigator. We've spent a good year working with a consulting firm around enviro issues. So I just don't, it goes back to what interim city manager Drake said about livability. And I, I don't want to lose sight of the investment we have made in the conversation and the collection of data that we will be informed about this spring. How does that impact what we do? And we haven't seen the report, so I don't know what that is, but, thank you, Mayor.
Well, and I just also want to add, if it's not on the list, doesn't mean that we can't continue to do it or, or do it. Is there a feeling that maybe public safety encompasses everything that we're talking about in that area, not just the word safety? And that becomes the overarching theme and not a bullet point underneath? Is that, does that feel correct? Any yes, no? Counselor who?
Yeah, to me, safety is, is like climate that is, it's, you know, it's in everything we do, sort of. So actually, I put safety, this might be controversial, under the big bullet point of the bond measure, because for the bond, the objective outcome is complete planning, design, and construction of a state-of-the-art public works and police department facility that enhances operational efficiency, public safety, and community engagement. So for me, if, say, public safety is, you know, already included in the new facility and also going to public engagement, because, you know, going back to, you know, public works, that's where, you know, they, they, they train cert, new cert members, so that's public engagement. And I imagine a new police facility will also help our PD's public engagement process. We can actually invite people over for hot cocoa, right? Because right now, I don't think you can invite. So, so anyway, going back to that, so going back to safety, I think safety is more, if safety is more of a improving sidewalks, a bike lane, and crosswalk, and high-traffic area and, and things like that, I, I don't know if safety, you know, as this is written right now, is worth a bullet on its own. If, if we are all talking about roads and, you know, traffic calming, we might as well just call it a, you know, you know. So actually, my goal for that is develop a comprehensive interconnected network of pedestrian and bike-friendly infrastructure, fostering a healthier, more sustainable environment for residents. So, but, you know, but, yeah, so in a way, I, I, I think it's more about road safety than safety, public safety, so.
Thank you for that. I would just counter that public safety isn't only under the lens of the bond measure, that it's much wider than that. And I think if we put that only as a bullet point under there, I think it narrows it too much against the discussion that we're having here. But perhaps safety isn't the, the correct, the correct sort of guiding vision or principle at the top of there, but thank you for that. Counselor Schleck?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm fine with calling the overall goal "public safety" for agreeing upon expanded definition, but I do think it's important to call out under that goal, sort of going back to some of my original thoughts. I think it's important to call out things like emergency services and emergency preparedness specifically there. And also, I do feel very strongly we should have some aspirational goal related to our police department. And this is just coming from my career experience where you hear, you know, the, the C-suite of a company comes out and they say, "These are our goals for the year." And you're like, where do I fit into this? And I feel like, since the police department is one of the key services that the city of Tigard provides, I'd like to find a way to have an aspirational goal that keeps that area of the city engaged with the council's vision going forward. That, that would be my preference.
What about instead of public safety or safety, it's livability? Because livability encompasses the way that you feel about your community. It encompasses the streets that you get on to get to work. It encompasses adequate facilities. Livability feels like, and parks perhaps could easily fit more under there, because it feels like the top is more community development and the bottom is, is our public works. It's how it's being divided out. Counselor Robbins?
I do like livability. I was trying to think of something along the lines of like health and safety or healthy living as well, because a lot of this is, you know, maintaining an infrastructure is maintaining a healthy infrastructure, you know? So we could, you know, some of it's maintenance, right? But also keeping it healthier, quality, and usable, so. But livability is fine. I would advocate that we could have parks down there, but parks are also a big opportunity because we do have some places where we don't have enough parkland, and we'd like to develop some parks, and so that is also an opportunity. So it, but that could be under both, both headings, right? Both bullets, but that, you know, we, we might want to figure out new parks, but we also want to make sure the parks we have are ideal, or maybe not, I don't know.
I just, I, I want us to take a step back for a second and figure out, these goals that we're developing, are they all aspirational, or are they something that we can feel like we can check a box? Because honestly, I don't know that there's that many up there that we can like check a box that we've completed, or what is a measure of success for these goals that we're making? Because I think these are all great, wonderful things, but I don't think many of these actually have action items for our city staff to actually work towards achieving these goals. And I worry about that. How are we going to say, man, we have improved street safety, right? What does that mean? Does it mean maintaining our pavement index and saying, you know, we talk about it every budget cycle, but we're going to stick with putting the money in our pavement index because we've invested a lot in our infrastructure? Is that what street safety means? Does it mean advocating for more money to go to sidewalk connectivity? So I'm just sort of thinking about the other side and the practical application of, are these goals aspirational? Like, can we put tangible things to them to make it easier on our city team? Because I think nothing is worse sort of as an employee than being like, this is your goal, but not knowing what actually it means to achieve it. So I think we're having really important, great conversation, but I don't, I, I think we're sort of mixing the two. Counselor Robbins?
Along those lines, I would, I would request that we change the affordable housing bullet point to housing, and then we can have a, a sub thing of affordable housing, and we're going to work, you know, and then we could have some metrics along that. But also, not everyone needs, some people want housing that's not very affordable, right? Like, I have someone who I'm trying to convince to move here, and I'm like, what's your budget? And I won't tell you what he said, but it, you know, it's like, oh, my goodness. So, but he still might want to move here, and we still want to support those people too. So there are different levels of housing. And then one of the bullet points would be to support permitting for X number of new homes every year, or, you know, I'm kind of just making that up, but there must be some sort of goal that could be created that could be, you know, maybe a stretch goal, but also easily, somewhat easily met based on the metrics that the department knows.
Maybe for housing.
Can I just ask?
Oh, go ahead, Jill.
I've been wondering if this bit here that I have highlighted ought to be the goal, and affordable housing slash affordable housing, big A, little a, is a sub-goal underneath that? Just a question.
No, you were heading exactly where I was going to, which is housing, a plan for the needs and housing needs analysis. How are we going to reach that goal? Which, and I will also just tell you, Counselor Robbins, in my mind, lower A affordability does mean the homes that you're talking about at all income levels. But as Counselor Who was talking about it, seems like the needs analysis, which I apologize, I have not yet read, includes all, a range of all types that are needed, correct?
Unknown participant is now joining.
Yeah. Most, most, most of the housing need in Tigard are actually for high-income households. So.
Thank you for dropping that bomb into this conversation.
Yeah, but there are a significant amount required for big capital A too, so, affordable too, so.
So I, I think, I think, yes, the plan then becomes develop a comprehensive, inclusive housing strategy for all residents using the housing needs analysis. Because we talk about being very data-driven, and that is data that we can perhaps use. I'm looking at faces of the city team, does that sound reasonable?
We, we do do that.
Yeah. Excellent. Okay. Can we go back to safety? Oh, go ahead, Jill.
Another, could I ask one more question? Is this something that is, was that just an example, or does it belong in this list?
I think you can get rid of it.
And then, just in terms of the goals, I'm wondering, you said something else, Counselor Who, and I didn't catch it because it was a little bit too quick for me, but it was, whatever your statement was on here, I'm just wondering if it's something like expand opportunity, sustain, livability? I, I don't know if you want to have verbs in front of them to identify what it is you're doing.
Well, well, for me, I, I put that as a goal under, a goal for addressing housing and houselessness. So second part of that is to address both the immediate need of the homelessness, the homeless population, and long-term affordable housing solution, ensuring stable housing opportunities for all residents. But that might be too wordy. I, I think develop a comprehensive, inclusive housing strategy for all residents using the housing analysis, I think that's perfect already, so.
And I would just say perhaps housing is one bullet point, and partnerships with providers in addressing houselessness is a different one. It's not under the housing bucket necessarily. Thank you. Counselor Gudusi?
Two things. One, under safety, I'd like to specifically call out community preparedness. So that ends up being the, expanding the EOC, looking at strengthening cert, weather preparedness, but also the safety of our aging and more vulnerable populations, that might be a side, highest risk. And second, we had talked a little bit about things like SMART goals, a specific measurable, achievable, relevant time bound, and these are not that except for time bound. So yes, we have two years, but how are we measuring it? So if we're saying, hey, city, this is what we have to do, what are you doing? Which becomes concerning if we actually at the end of this want to say, what have we done? Because the answer is, we won't have done any of it.
I will also tell you, historically, we have sort of also put out like pie-in-the-sky ideas and goals, and the, the team works really, really hard on the magic in the details and brings us back a more comprehensive, I think this is actually maybe even the most comprehensive I've seen us do previously, and coming with bullet points underneath of like, what does that mean? And like, how is that achieved? Is that, am I remembering correctly?
Yeah, Mayor, one of the things I wanted to touch on when Counselor Gudusi, when you mentioned, how do we measure those? So we, let's use street safety for example. That would mean something different for the police department versus public works. So for street safety for public works, it might be address pothole concerns with, within X number of days. And then what percentage of those pothole concerns did they get, did they meet in that, you know, that imposed time? Ours may be respond to traffic complaints in certain areas within a certain amount of time, address it for a certain length of time, whether it's with traffic enforcement, so traffic stops, or the radar trailer, or other traffic calming types of efforts. You know, maybe partnering with engineering to see if it's appropriate to make some changes to the roadway. So those would probably look different by department, but we, I'll go ahead and speak for Brian, I feel confident in that I can for this. We would look at those individually and then be able to set metrics within our own departments where those can, can make an impact, where we aren't necessarily working on exactly the same thing, but it, it's, has the same type of meaning. Yeah.
I also just want to do a general time check, that we've got about 20 minutes. Not to say we have to finish, we can always continue this conversation, but we probably have, we have Jill here for another 20 minutes. Counselor Schleck?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for the conversation. I really like where this, these goals are going right now. I think they're, they're sort of creating a, for me, what I would consider sort of that holistic vision that I mentioned earlier of aspirational goals. Where do we want to take the city over the next two years? And that would be my thought process of where this lands, is more of the aspirational side as opposed to sort of managerial SMART goals, although those will be important for actually enacting policy. Just looking at the livability list, I would like to suggest a little bit of editing. I'd mentioned emergency services and preparedness, but I feel like Counselor Gudusi's definition of community preparedness overlapped a lot with sort of what, what I was intending, so I, I would suggest taking that out. And then additionally, adequate facilities, considering we have a goal that says deliver reliable and resilient facilities, I'd like to suggest that we take that bullet point out as well, since I feel like the bond measure is sort of the, the capstone point of that third goal, but that's, if we're having a goal entirely on facilities, I feel like there's some other sub-points that we could maybe establish under that. And then, you know, we have, what is that, six up there? I feel like that feels more reasonable personally.
Thank you. My other, as far as adequate faci- My other, as far as adequate facilities, we were just told that the library roof has a problem, and I think we have, and we don't know if our, our bond is going to pass, and I think it's incumbent upon us to, you know, have that resilience, that facility resilience for the, the facilities we currently have, not just the new ones in the future. So my argument is that stays.
It's very important for me that the library roof is addressed. I was just trying to look at how to consolidate some of our language, but I accept that point.
Yeah. I, I think perhaps the city team, again, will do some massaging and some magic, and maybe come up with better wording, but I think that how we're getting here in this conversation will lead that. Am I volunteering y'all for too much? Oh, okay. Rob says no.
Mayor, no. I mean, that's what we do, and I'm going to comment that city staff sort of toils in silence while you're off leading the other half of your lives. They're here every day, and whether it's the police at 12, 10 a.m. in the morning, cleaning up an accident, or whether it's an event, the one thing I would advise, I like the passion around the table and the vision process here, but nothing, absolutely nothing happens overnight. But again, back to that thousand-step journey, it begins with the one step. You may not see what's going on every move in the community, but whether it's a subdivision, or somebody coming in and talking to the city staff about a development that they'd like to put together, be patient. You can have all the passion and fire in your belly you want, but you can't move a mountain overnight. No one ever has, never will, and again, living out in this area since 1962, I think back to, how did I get to Tiger from North Beaverton? How did we? We had to go Hall Boulevard the whole way, and Highway 217 was a creek bit. And Highway 217 began with no overpasses. You had to stop at a stop sign, go out in the middle, stop again, and then cross again to get to the other side. Now there's huge improvements along the roadway, but who would have thought, and who thinks about, maybe I'm the only guy who does, but who thinks about, how far did we come? And you're doing the ABCs that you need to do to get this community moving forward. It's there. And it's nice to see that you're impatient, because you're not going to rest on your laurels, but all I can say is, while you may think you're sitting back, a lot's being done that you helped initiate. And when we invite the public in, we get more ideas, they do more to develop the community, they see the needs, and they might volunteer to go out and help plant bulbs in the parks. So don't be too hard on yourself, I mean, keep pushing, just do like you think, for those of you who are a little bit older versus younger, you may have aspired to have a certain type of home, you worked hard, maybe as a couple, as a family, and you eventually got that home. And you're more secure today than you were, but I know from experience, it didn't happen overnight. And you put off buying a car because you want to save money for something else, same thing we do as a city, every day, and it plays out. I, I come in objectively, and I see the work that's been done and is being done, and kudos to all of you for having that vision, and sitting here instead of being home, maybe reading a magazine, or, you're devoting the time you need to devote, and so are the people around you that we serve. So don't be too hard on yourself, but keep the fire going, because I think you're getting there.
Thank you. Counsel President Wolf, you had your hand up.
That's what, and I think, Mayor, you addressed it, I'm eager to kind of hand this to you all, and kind of do your magic and go, what makes sense, and bring that back. I mean, to the point of the strategies, you all did a great job two year, years ago, making those more action-oriented, more specific for us to follow. We also have a strategic plan that, at some point this year, we'll start working on, I assume. So I, so to that, what you've already said, Mayor, I look forward to greater staff design and input. But the one thing I wanted to kind of address with Kim is, and you touched on it, just from homelessness in those systems, SHS, Metro, I think there's a basket there that you might have some fabulous words around, to kind of bring home our role in all of that, and advocate for the work we do in this corner of the county. So, that's my final shot. So, thank you.
Counsel Shaw?
Yeah, Jill, do you mind putting your, going down to the next bullet, which was, we were calling formerly the bond measure, and maybe looking to Counsel President Who and the mayor? It seems, I, I like, I think that's explicit what we need to be doing, but I'm also wondering if adequate facilities doesn't fit into that, because if the roof is going to be so key at the library, that's something that's going to be a budget item, and it's going to be, to me, almost as equally important as a bond measure. So, just a thought. And again, looking to staff, who I'm sure could do some really great magic with this, and if that makes sense, great, but it just seemed like a one-off in livability.
Yeah, I mean, we deliver reliable and resilient facilities. Yeah, it could go under there as a separate bullet. Yeah. Thumbs up. Okay. City team, do you feel like you have everything you need to move forward?
Thank you very much, Counsel. This was a great conversation. I feel confident that our team can put our heads together and come up with some language, and try to identify some SMART goals and metrics to offer to you all for your consideration. And we'll try to be really intentional and aspirational. So if we can plan to follow up with you, is that?
Excellent. Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for your thoughtful conversation that we had, and I would recommend that we recess for the next 10 minutes and reconvene at 6:45.
May, may I ask one quick question first? Do I, do I delete adequate facilities from livability and leave it here?
Yes, please.
Okay. Thanks so much, everybody, and I so appreciate, Mayor, you keeping my timing in mind. I'm going to save this, and I will email it to people sitting around the table.
I'm staring right at a clock, so I've got you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. See you in 10 minutes.
Council meeting, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will please stand and join me. Thank you, everyone. I enjoy having a full house tonight, so thank you so much for being here. There's a few things I wanted to go ahead and start out with tonight. First, I would like to wish Counselor Robbins a happy birthday today. We could make her feel really uncomfortable and sing to her. But just appreciate you spending your birthday here with us. The second thing I... Oh, well, I think there's cupcakes in there. There's, I mean, I'm just saying. You do have those lovely flowers. The other thing that the City Council would like to do is Deputy City Recorder Jesse Raymundo is, I believe this is going to be his last council meeting with us. And the City Council would just like to thank Jesse for everything that he's done for us and that we are going to miss him and really appreciate him. Thank you for indulging me. One more thing. You know, I know it's been a really hard couple of weeks for a lot of people, just seeing everything that's changing on multiple different levels and our different levels of government. And what I want to say is that Tigard will continue to follow our state and federal laws. I also want to say that we will live our values through our community promise in the way that we treat each other and welcome our community. And we have that in our council chambers, and it's something that I think about quite often with equity, environment, economy, engagement, and excellence. And we will continue to advocate as a city for federal policy where it's appropriate, where there are things that are impacting the City of Tigard and our dollars. We will be active and we will be loud and we will have our communities back when we need to make those comments. And we will continue to be a welcoming city for everyone who calls Tigard home, regardless of who you love or what you like to wear or what's going on with you. You are welcome to be here in Tigard, and this Tigard City Council is going to fight for that and continue to welcome you here. So I just wanted to reaffirm those of you in our community that we are here for you, all of you, and we will continue to take every day by day or maybe hour by hour as it continues to go, but just continue to reaffirm that. Next, I would like to ask the City Council or the city team if there are any non-agenda items this evening. All right. Seeing none, we will move on to public comment. If you'd like to provide public comment, please call in now or log in to get into the queue. The phone number is 503-966-4101. And anyone wanting to comment in person, there is a sign up in the back of the room. Please do so. There were no comments received by noon yesterday. Deputy City Recorder Raymundo, has anyone signed up to speak in person? Thank you. Mr. Vang, are there any phone callers in the queue or anyone wishing to comment by video this evening?
There are no callers, Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. The next item is Proclamations and Recognition, and we have Senior Court Clerk Winn here to introduce this item on behalf of our Equity Advisory Committee. Welcome.
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Maria Winn, and I'm here to present the Equity Advisory Committee for the City of Tigard's request to make a proclamation to make February Black History Month.
Excellent. So be it proclaimed. So it will be February 2025 will be Black History Month in Tigard. And I have a plaque to present you if you'd like to come on up or if there are other members of the committee.
I don't think so.
And next, I would like to invite up our Police Chief McDonald here to present Police Department Unit and Life Saving Awards. I'm so grateful that we're doing this here at Council Now, and it's lovely to see all of you. You never know what you're going to sit on.
This is true. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'm honored to be here tonight to present a couple of awards, and I'd like to start with a unit commendation award. This goes to, and the list is long, so please bear with me. Record Supervisor Amber Ferrier, Record Specialist Cindy Pierce, Linda Gertsen, Melissa Black, and Danielle Gonzalez, Property and Evidence Specialist Kristen Warwick, Sugarino, and Stephanie Nagley, for dedication and teamwork displayed throughout the year of 2024. As a unit, the Tiger Police Department Records Division and Property and Evidence Unit worked together tirelessly to assist our department in its core mission. During staff shortages, changes in leadership, personnel, trials, and other unforeseen obstacles, these members of the Records Division and Property and Evidence Unit banded together with grace and compassion, never losing sight of their goals, and were a backup of support when staffing needed coverage. Their relentless pursuit of accuracy and keen focus on attention to detail exemplifies the Tiger Police Department's core values of attitude, leadership, integrity, service, and teamwork, and reflects great credit upon themselves, the Tiger Police Department, and the City of Tigard. So if you join me in congratulating all of them, thank you. And if we may, could we, would it be okay if we got a picture with the mayor and council with all of them to recognize their fantastic work? Thank you. Come on. All right, thank you. All right, and now I'd like to invite Officer Anella Sarek up here with me, if you wouldn't mind, Anella. This is a life-saving medal for Officer Sarek. So bear with me for a moment. These are always kind of a big deal when we have the opportunity to save a community member's life. This is to Officer Anella Sarek. For lifesaving efforts on September 1st of 2024, Officer Sarek responded to a CPR call at Timberline Apartments where a female was unconscious and not breathing normally. As Officer Sarek entered the apartment, the patient was unconscious and a female was administering CPR. Officer Sarek quickly established this was an overdose. Without hesitation, Officer Sarek retrieved her naloxone and administered it to the patient. When the patient did not respond to the antidote, Officer Sarek administered a second dose and took over CPR. Shortly thereafter, the patient became responsive but continued to go in and out of consciousness. The female was transported to the hospital and later admitted to using fentanyl. Without the quick decisive actions of Officer Sarek, the female may not have survived. Officer Sarek's professionalism and skill reflect great credit upon herself, the Tiger Police Department, and the City of Tigard. Congratulations. Can we do photos again? And if all of you would like to join. Okay, one more after them. Okay, ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief. The next item on the agenda is Board Committee and Commission Appointments, and we have Assistant to the City Manager Nicole Hendricks here to introduce the item. Ooh, there's a slideshow.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you, Nicole Hendricks, Assistant to the City Manager. We're bringing forward for your consideration recommended appointments for our Boarding Committees that have openings. We did have a total of 11 different positions across our different boards, including Audit and Budget Committee, Committee for Community Engagement, Library Board, and our Town Center Advisory Commission. We also have openings on the Youth Advisory Council. We had 12 people apply, and all 12 were interviewed by the mayor at the end of January, and we provided the applications and interview notes to you all a couple of weeks ago. Board applications are open year round, so if you know anybody who's interested, we always welcome more applications. The recommended appointees were invited here tonight, so thank you and your families for being here. We are asking for council to consider passing the resolutions to appoint these members. We have the celebratory little cupcakes in the back if anybody wants some. And with that, I think I'll hand it back over to the mayor.
Is the, does the slideshow, is that the slideshow or are there other?
We, the following slides have the different appointments. So if you go to next slide, please, that's for the Audit Committee, and we can show each slide, or sorry, Budget Committee, and we can transition to the next slides as we do the resolutions.
Excellent. Are there any questions or comments or perhaps a motion on the first?
I move to approve Resolution Number 2506.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the City Recorder read the name and number of the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-06, a resolution appointing William Lewis as a voting member to the Budget Committee.
Thank you. Is William here? Oh, there, hi, William.
And he goes by Bill, sorry.
Youth Counselor Minini, will you provide an advisory vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, Resolution 25-06 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Thank you. The next resolution is for the Committee for Community Engagement. Are there any questions or comments?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-07.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the City Recorder read the name and number of the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-07, a resolution appointing Miranda Batessi, Christina Poterman, and Stephanie Godfrey as members of the Committee for Community Engagement.
Thank you. Youth Counselor Minini, will you provide an advisory vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, Resolution 25-07 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Do we have Miranda, Christina, and Stephanie raise your hand? Yeah? Excellent. Thank you all for being here. The next resolution is for the Library Board. Are there any questions, comments, or a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-08.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Will the City Recorder read the name and number on the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-08, a resolution appointing Jessica Lynn as an alternate member of the Library Board.
Thank you. Youth Counselor Minini, will you provide an advisory vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion, the Resolution 25-08 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Is Jessica here?
I am there in spirit over the phone.
Oh, no. Well, I hope you feel better, but thank you for being online.
Yeah, I didn't know about cupcakes, man. I would have.
We'll see if we can get you one, or maybe we'll have one for you at the first in-person library board you go to, looking at Halsted. Can you take care of that? We got you covered, Jessica. I know. See, no one wants to...
Thank you, Halsted. I love chocolate.
No one wants to miss out on cupcakes. The next resolution before you is the Town Center Advisory Commission. Are there any questions or comments or a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-09.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. You were so happy about that. Will the City Recorder read the name and number of the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-09, a resolution appointing Michelle Powers as a voting member and Dan Hayes as an alternate member to the Town Center Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Will the Youth Counselor Minini provide an advisory vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 25-09 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Michelle and Dan? Thank you. The next person is the Youth Advisory Council. Is there a, any questions or comments or a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-10.
It's been moved and seconded. Will the City Recorder read the name and number of the resolution?
Resolution Number 25-10, a resolution reappointing Chelsea Vicente, and I'm not sure how to pronounce the last name, I apologize, to the Tigard Youth Advisory Council.
Thank you. Youth Counselor Minini, will you provide an advisory vote?
Aye.
Thank you. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 25-10 is adopted by unanimous vote of the council. Okay, I don't see Chelsea, but we will cheers for her anyway. Will you help us organize pictures? Excellent. Excellent. It is good exercise and it's fun. The next item on our agenda is a briefing on Safe Streets for All. And we have Principal Engineer Furman and Principal Transportation Planner Gurkey to present the briefing. Welcome.
Yes, but you have cupcakes.
We have safety.
Which is the best. All right. And we do have a PowerPoint. I don't know whose.
Can we see it on the other screen as well?
Oh, there it is. Yes, we can see it. Okay. Maybe we'll do brief introductions first. As mentioned, my name's Tiffany Gurkey. I am the Principal Transportation Planner for the City of Tigard. I know I know many of you, and I'm happy to be here today to present on this alongside. I'll let Courtney take.
Good evening. I'm Courtney Furman. I'm a Principal Engineer at Tigard. And I will hand it over to Talia.
Wonderful to meet you all. I'm Talia Jacobson with Tool Design Group, and I'm the Consultant Project Manager for the team working on this plan. Happy to be here.
Talia, if you want a picture later, we can do that for you, too.
My parents would be so proud. Don't want to feel left out. Okay, then we can go to the next slide. Okay, so our agenda tonight is we're gonna, I'm gonna do a quick overview, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Talia to go over the safety findings and the prioritization of safety, future safety projects. And then we'll hand it over to Tiffany to wrap it up. So we can go to the next slide. Okay, so I know that some of you have already heard this, but we do have some new counselors, so I wanted to just do a quick overview. This project is funded through a federal grant, Safe Streets and Roads for All, SS4A. And Tigard was awarded $240,000 to develop a comprehensive safety action plan. And this was awarded in partnership with a few other jurisdictions, and we're working very closely with Metro on these efforts. And then this plan builds on many existing Tigard plans and policies. So strategic priority, council goals, so very fitting with the conversation earlier, our transportation system plan, and then complete streets policy. Can we go to the next slide? Okay, so a quick overview of the safe systems approach. So this is the, kind of the heart of our Safe Streets Action Plan. And there are a few materials in the packet that you have. And there is one that is a federal guidance, just has a quick overview about the safe systems approach. So if you want more details, that is there. But the idea is that we want to eliminate fatal and serious injuries for all road users. And the way to achieve that is through many different disciplines and many partnerships, both within the city and with the community. So there are education efforts so that we have safe road users. We want to have safe vehicles. We want to have safe speeds on our roads. And in line with this, we are actually reducing, we received approval from ODOT to reduce the speed limit on quite a large number of streets within Tigard recently. And that is all under this umbrella of the safe systems approach. And we also have safe roads, which is what we'll be talking about with safety projects and then post-crash care. We can go to the next slide. So our project is split into four phases, and we are about halfway through the project. So we had an update on the first phase, the envision, last time we were here. And now we'll be going over the understand phase. And there is also a handout in your packet that goes over the elements of a SS4A plan. And so we are following that very closely to make sure that we'll meet all of the requirements. We can go to the next slide. So this is a quick overview of the project, and it's about a year-long project. So we're about, like I said, we're about halfway through. And we have public engagement efforts, task force, multidisciplinary task force meetings, and city council updates at each stage of the project. And as I said, we'll be going over the safety analysis as one of the major elements today. As we can go to the next slide. So this schedule is just the tasks that are just in this three-month phase that we will be sharing today. The main tasks, as you see, are focused on safety analysis, and Talia will be going over all of that. We also end this task with site selection for our safety projects. So we're seeking input from this group but also from the community through a survey online for that right now as well. And we can go to the next slide. So this is, I think, a helpful way to look at the safety analysis and development of projects. So what you're going to be hearing about today is that box one, and that is our safety analysis. And to be really comprehensive, we are looking at this both reactive, so looking at the crashes that have happened, but also being proactive and trying to assess risks before anything happens. So we'll be going over that today. And then I thought this would be helpful for you to see the things that are coming next and that we will be bringing to the next update when we start developing those projects and looking at prioritizing the projects and how effective they are from a safety perspective. And I think it's time to hand it over to Talia now.
Thank you very much. Next slide, please. So I want to start by really taking us through what we can learn from the crash data in combination with other city data sets that we have, seeing what this tells us about safety in Tigard. I'm lucky, I get to spend a lot of my time immersed in safety data and seeing what stories it tells, but I recognize that is not true for everyone. So please, counselors, I would like to invite you all to ask questions as I go. It will not get less confusing if you let me get 20 slides on before you feel you're able to ask. So one of the places that you tend to start in safety analysis is you look at the five most recent years of crash data that are available. At the time that we started this project, that was data through 2022. It takes a few years for crash reports to be processed. So based on crashes that were reported in the City of Tigard in that five-year period, there were nearly 3,000 crashes reported. And of those, 90 resulted in someone being seriously injured, and tragically, six of them resulted in someone dying. As you can see, people walking and biking were disproportionately impacted and much more likely to be injured or killed in crashes. They're a very large share of the folks who suffered a life-altering injury or a death in crashes. And so that's why you're gonna hear a focus on people walking and biking, as we call them vulnerable road users. They're travelers who do not have the protection of a large metal box around them. Next slide, please. So when we look at the kinds of data that a reporting officer is able to record at the scene, one of the things that we do want to do is consider the role of behavior, which can be changed through personal choice, through education campaigns, and also through how we design and manage the roads. When you look at the most common behaviors that led to serious and fatal crashes in Tigard, the number one is failure to yield, not allowing another street user to go when it's their turn. After that, reckless driving, which is a pretty broad category in Oregon, it's driving in a way that is not safe for the conditions. After that, then, the other, the two next prevalent are not obeying stop signs or traffic signals. And the last one is driving while impaired, which can mean someone who is under the influence of drugs or alcohol, someone who's too tired, or someone who is unwell in a way where they shouldn't be behind the wheel. Next slide, please. So the next piece of the puzzle that we look at is mapping crashes, but mapping them with an eye towards where are we seeing frequent crashes that are closely spaced? And where are we seeing higher severity crashes? We combine this data and we produce what's called a high injury network. And that says, where do we have the most frequent and most severe crashes? So the darker the colors, the more frequent and severe the crashes. Also, we find it helpful to have people who are looking at this understand that both streets owned by the City of Tigard and streets owned by partners are part of our high injury network. The Tigard-owned streets are indicated in red, and the partner-owned streets are indicated in blue. There's a lot of information on this map, so I've got a couple of slides just pulling those pieces out separately. Next slide, please. So looking at the high injury network, one of the things that you notice if you get to spend a while with this map is you can see that many of the hotspots in Tigard are found where the Tigard streets approach higher-volume, higher-speed roads, often those roads that are owned by partners. Think 99W, think Schultz Ferry. And if you look at the partner-owned roads, next slide, please. One of the things that you can see here on this is that those higher-speed, faster-moving, more heavily trafficked roads are not a monolith, but there are hotspots within that road where you do see more clustering of frequent and severe crashes. So this is the data that's getting us a lot more nuance on what are the patterns of crashes that have happened in the last five years. I'm about to move on to a different aspect of our safety analysis. Are there any questions about the high injury network? Next slide, please. So the high-risk network is our complement. And this one is, begins with historic crash data and then builds for a look at the future. And the way you do that is you look at that five most recent years of crashes where we have data. And you test a number of street and roadway factors and also neighborhood context factors and see which ones are most correlated with past serious and fatal crashes. From that, we build profiles, which are groups of factors that we see are present on the roads where serious and frequent crashes occurred. And then the way we produce the high-risk network is we take those profiles and we map everywhere in the City of Tigard that they're found. And this allows us to look at what are the locations where we see an elevated potential of frequent and serious crashes in the future? Next slide, please. So I'm not gonna attempt to play this video now. I have, I have had bad experiences with small videos not being willing to play in meetings, but this is a great one that's in your pocket. And it just makes the point that there are many areas in life where we do not wait for something to go wrong before we prevent a risk. We get preventative health screenings. We put up smoke alarms in our houses. And part of the systemic approach that we're taking is trying to take the same approach to street and traffic safety. Next slide, please. So this is our high-risk network. Any street in red or blue is considered to be on the high-risk network. The thicker and darker the lines, the more elevated that score is. So the darkest, thickest lines show what we call critical risk locations. Red is for Tigard-owned, blue is for partner-owned. What you can start seeing here is there is a subset of the streets found in the City of Tigard where if you make investments in making those places designed more safely, operate them more safely, you have a disproportionate impact in preventing deaths and serious injuries on the road. So this lets us focus on where can we take proactive action to save lives and protect our neighbors. So let's talk about the factors that help us predict those locations. Next slide, please. So I want to be clear, these factors, like I said, they, they told us where, they were linked to past crashes. They give us a sense of where crashes may occur in the future. It's not a why, it's a where. When we look at which factors came out of the data, wider streets with posted speeds over 25 miles an hour and more cars per day using the streets are all factors that are linked to more frequent and severe crashes in Tigard. What we also see is certain neighborhoods where there are a greater percentage of people who are socially vulnerable or who lack access to a vehicle. Unfortunately, those are also factors that are linked to greater frequency and severity of crashes. And we're gonna dig into those equity findings more in future slides. I want to be clear, these are not necessarily factors that cause crashes, but they help us find the locations that need attention to prevent crashes in the future. Any questions about this high-risk network? Yes.
Thank you. This is very interesting. I am kind of curious. Maybe you covered it a little bit here, but what, what is the threshold for something to become a high-risk road?
That is a great question. I would definitely wish that I had one of my data science people here with me to help me be as accurate as possible. But when we, when we look at profiles, we have profiles for the entire network. And you have, which is divided into critical, high, medium, low, and minimal risk. Low and minimal-risk roads are not considered to be on the high-risk network. And this isn't allocated by an equal number of, of street miles in every category, because the whole point is we want to find the subsets of the network where investment safety has an outside result. So I believe, I can confirm this, but I believe that the methodology looks at what you call in statistics, natural breaks, where you sort of have a cluster of scores. natural breaks, where you sort of have a cluster of scores, a gap, and then another cluster of scores, and then a gap. And so it's looking at the safety risk in that way and then mapping it. Does that help at all? I realize it's only a partial, it's a non-statistician's answer.
Yes, I understand that, but I feel like anything you're analyzing, if you don't know what the threshold is, you know, I mean, I'm just wondering, what is the tolerance for risk that we're putting for critical risk versus high risk? And I don't mean tolerance in like a statistical term. I mean it as a, you know, like, is it one crash per month? Or six crashes per month? That's what I want to know, because you know, if you lower the bar too much, everything becomes critical. So I want to know where that bar is.
That is a fantastic question, and I do not have an easy answer for it off the top of my head. I don't believe that there is a limit that is imposed in advance. The method itself, it's a learning algorithm. It draws out of the data, so the breaks will be a little bit different in every community where we do this work. But I'm happy to take a closer look at our methods memo and have Tiffany and Courtney follow up with you to answer that question about what's the toleration that's built into the calculation.
And just to reiterate, with the high-risk network, it's not necessarily gauging it by number of crashes, because it's looking at the factors that were pulled out that correlate with crashes. So it's kind of just saying, these are the hotspots because they have these factors. So it's not those same thresholds as far as number of crashes.
Any other question about the high-risk network before I move on to the next pieces? Yes.
So sorry if I didn't ask earlier about the slide about the most common street behavior that lead to serious crashes. So in your slide, you break it down to four categories. So 14% is reckless driving, 11% not obeying signs. So which one would speeding be falling there?
This is a great segue. I'm about to talk about speed, and I'll give you the lead-up to why you didn't see speed listed on there.
Okay.
So for a responding officer to actually indicate on the crash report that speed was a factor that contributed to the crash, they have to have been able to measure the speed the vehicles were traveling, meaning they had to have a radar gun present. Unfortunately, that is not often something that's present when officers respond to the scene of a crash. So in terms of those factors that were on Slide 10, reckless driving certainly can include traveling at a speed that is not safe for conditions by the judgment of the officer. But if you were to go purely by what an officer is allowed by law to indicate on the report, speed is under-reported. And as it happens, my next slide is about the importance of speed when we are trying to create a safe system. So if we go to the next slide, please, I'll talk about this a little bit now. So one of the things that is really important to do as a part of education is helping the community understand what the connection is between speed and safety. We've been doing some community engagement. Most recently, we had a great tabling event at the tree lighting in December. And one of the fascinating things that we found talking to community members is a lot of folks are not aware of the connection between the speed a vehicle is traveling and the risk of a crash or serious injury. And so this is part of the materials that we're putting together to help people understand why speed and safety are connected. The speed that you are traveling as a driver affects how much visual information you can take in. So in the second row here, what you can see is we have an illustration sort of illustrating someone attempting to cross the street. The faster this driver is going, the less likely they're actually taking in the information that that pedestrian is beginning to enter the street. Stopping distance, this one is familiar for anyone who's had to sit through high school physics. The more momentum and the faster the speed of a moving object, the longer it takes to stop that momentum. And so, you know, 200 feet is, if you're in your neighboring city, downtown Portland, that's about a block. So when you're going 40 miles an hour, it's going to take you a block and a half to come to a complete stop. And the last one is the evidence-based pedestrian fatality rate. Once you are going over about 25 miles an hour, the risk that a pedestrian will not survive a crash goes up markedly. And by the time you're at 40 miles an hour, eight out of 10 people will not survive being struck by a vehicle that's moving that speed. So I hope that's some helpful framing around speed, but this, I think, is going to continue to be an area where there's a lot of potential for safety education to help people in Tigard make safer choices as they're traveling. And at the same time, we're going to be talking about ways that you can design and manage the street system where someone doesn't need to make a conscious choice in order to find they are naturally driving a safe speed. So continuing with speed, next slide, please. One of the ways that we chose to study speed here is by comparing the posted speeds on city streets to records of what are called speed studies, where you measure the speed at which vehicles are traveling and see sort of, you know, the full range of speeds that people are choosing to drive on that street. And we really found that we had what we're calling speeding-concern corridors in a few conditions. So we're, based on the data that I just shared, speeding-concern corridor exists anywhere people are driving 40 miles an hour or more, whether or not it is legal for them to be driving that speed there, simply because at 40 miles an hour, you are looking at much greater risks of serious and fatal injuries if a crash occurs. We also said there are serious speeding concerns. If you have a location where 85% of drivers, so that's three drivers out of 20, are going 11 miles an hour or more over the speed limit, so a significant difference between the speed it's been judged safe for them to travel and the speed that they're driving. And then we also said that you have a speeding-concern corridor where you've got a posted speed of at least 35 miles an hour, and people are going, some people are going at least six miles over that. So again, getting up to that 40 miles an hour or higher. When you look at streets across the city of Tigard, what we find is we have what we're calling 10 speeding-concern corridors. Any questions about that? I realize I just threw a lot of numbers out there.
Thank you. I have, I guess, just a general or a future-facing question, because we know that the posted speed and the engineered speed of the road are two different things, right? Like, and I'm looking at you Bull Mountain Road that was just brought down to 35 miles an hour that people are speeding over 40. And so I'm just asking, like, I sort of feel like we sit here and we pat ourselves on the back of like, we lowered speed limits. But the posted road is, the posted speed is different than the engineered speed, and people drive, excuse me, I would say more along the lines of the engineered speed that they feel comfortable with on the road. And so while we're patting ourselves on the back for Bull Mountain, it doesn't feel like we're actually doing anything tangible to make the road safer for the people who still feel like it's okay to drive speeding even over 40. So is there a way that at some point we can talk about the tactics of how do we change the feel of the engineered road without actually having to build a new road to actually make it safer? Because I'm not saying lowering speeds are bad, but I'm saying it feels very performative. Because, you know, we all drive what we feel comfortable driving, like if you're not paying attention to the speed.
Yeah, I'll just start and then maybe hand it off. But I think the safe speed, setting the speed limit to what is safer or appropriate, is just one piece of it. Like in that wheel, it's just one part, but it absolutely is not enough on its own, and we know that. But it's one important step, and it gives us the ability to engineer the improvements to that speed, because the speed limits have to be approved through the state, and it's a lengthy process. It took us two years to get some of those approved. So we don't want to wait to try to get those approvals, and then we can't engineer these improvements to that lower speed. So it really is a combination of those improvements and setting the speed limit appropriately. And the locations that we're going to be talking about, one of the strategies is there are going to be some locations where they really do need a huge capital project to rebuild the road. But there's also a lot of improvements that you can do that are lower cost, and a lot of times it's called a quick build, and that's something that we're going to be looking at as well to be able to do things in the near term. So those will be part of the discussions as we look at each location, but I'll let you add to that. If you guys have anything else?
Excellent. That's really helpful, because I, yeah, I think we know these things. So having actionable, especially as we talked about our council goals and safety and street safety, I think this then becomes a piece of this of when we see what we need to do, then how do we start to implement that and live our values through our budget and our dollars? So that piece of it is really important to me. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm happy to add in more specifically, how can you expect this project to advance this topic between now and the time it comes back to you for adoption? So first, on the project side, we're going to be talking about the locations that are beginning to rise to the top in terms of their urgency and the potential benefit of making safety improvements there. Part of studying those locations is not just taking this larger data we have, but also sitting down with the crash reports, diagramming out what movements were happening, looking at what is it like as a place, what are the built environment factors that all of the travelers are responding to, and beginning to say for this specific location, what is the countermeasure, which is an evidence-based kind of improvement, where we can say very specifically, when you make this improvement, this kind of crash decreases by a certain amount. And as we're identifying that, we have a team that does a lot of work in, as Courtney was describing, quick build, which is not just what is the version of this in permanent concrete that lasts forever, but what is the version of this that your maintenance crew might be able to put in the ground in a couple of months using materials that you have, where maybe it will take a little bit more upkeep, but it will make things safe right away.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, noting that there's differences per road and what the causes are. Does your research also take into account the width of the road and if parking is on both sides? Because that's very inconsistent in Tigard, too. Like Bull Mountain, some places you can't, it's very wide. But there are some streets near some schools that you can park on, it's a very narrow street, and there's parking on both sides.
So one of the things that we are often trying to understand at the point where we have safety locations picked and we're beginning to develop projects, is understanding what are all of the movements that the people traveling through those locations are making, and where are those movements resulting in conflicts in time and space? With narrowness of roads and parking, you can get some very interesting effects where, yes, parking adds complexity. And anytime you have road design, whether it's parking, no parking, or other elements that's changing frequently, the drivers may behave in a way that was right for their expectations a block ago, but isn't right now. On the flip side, narrower roads, roads that feel narrower to a driver who's driving, whether it's because of the presence of parking, or of trees, or of other elements, or protected intersections, it's one of those things that can cause drivers to choose a slower travel speed because they don't feel as able to go. And so this is all the stuff we dig into. The second piece of how you'll see speeding addressed when this final plan comes to you from adoption is we're going to have strategies that are about all of the things you do that are not investments and capital projects that allow the city to make and carry out decisions on how you design, operate, and maintain your roads. And so along with the project investment recommendations, we will also have strategy recommendations that will result in safer streets, safer speeds on the city of Tigard, whether that starts with a change in posted speed or starts with a change in how that street feels and flows to the people there.
Yeah, just quick observations. So this morning, my neighborhood street usually is 20 mile per hour and pretty narrow, but unfortunately, people are speeding through it all the time, even going to the speed bumps. But this morning, a bunch of tree, from PG, tree-cutting crew, they were not there, they were on break, but they put a bunch of orange cones in the center divided lane and at the side of the street, and they leave the street the same. They didn't touch the regular road, but I observed that everybody just slowed down so much just with some orange cones on the road. So it goes to your point, we may not have, we don't have to always invest in a lot of money, just simple design elements, well, maybe not so simple, but design elements would really dramatically improve the speeding situation. So yeah, I totally agree with that, so thank you.
And I'm glad to know that this is a topic that the council feels strongly about and is interested in, because it takes this kind of leadership attention to help create a safer system and inspire people to change their own behavior. So next slide, I want to talk now a little bit about what happens when we apply an equity lens to these safety findings. And I was very glad to come in here today, hear the mayor's introduction, see equity as the first of the five Es. Our plan has a strong focus on making the streets safer for people who are vulnerable in our community and who are not traveling in protection, with the protection of a vehicle. So we began by looking at the demographics. We shared this work for you at the previous council briefing. We found that five particular neighborhoods in Tigard have a greater share of socially vulnerable residents than the rest of the city. These include people who are more likely to need to walk, bike, and take transit to meet their daily needs. And when we look at the safety findings in terms of the high injury network, the high-risk network, and the speeding-concern corridors, unfortunately, what we see is that these neighborhoods are likely to be overexposed to crashes and to safety risks. And I'm going to break it down a little bit, piece by piece. So if you would go to the next slide. Beginning with what we learned when we look at our high injury network. All of the neighborhoods are overexposed to high injury network to some degree. In particular, streets in the Greenberg, North Tigard area, the Tigard Triangle, and the downtown area are 90% more likely to be on the high-crash network than streets in other neighborhoods in the city. So those neighborhoods have been particularly exposed to crashes in the last five years where we have data available. Next slide. So now we're moving to the high-risk network. And what we see here is that all five of the socially vulnerable neighborhoods are 80% more likely to have their streets beyond that high-risk network than our streets in the rest of the neighborhood. So we're really seeing elevated risk of future crashes in these neighborhoods as well. And then our speeding-concern corridors. On the next slide, this one is less of an overall pattern, it's much more variable by neighborhood. What you're going to see here is the Tigard Triangle neighborhood at first glance is very overexposed. There are 10 speeding-concern corridors in the city of Tigard, three of them are in the Tigard Triangle. And in addition, the downtown and the Southview neighborhoods have an adjacent speeding-concern corridor that is likely to be the route that some people take to get into and out of their neighborhood. And so we do see increased exposure to speeds there. Next slide. So the takeaways from the equity assessment is there is a strong evidence basis for paying attention to equity in this plan. It is not just a value, it is based on the data findings where we are seeing disproportionate exposure of socially vulnerable people and to other people who work, study, shop, and travel in those neighborhoods. More frequent, more severe crashes, more streets with factors linked to risk, and in some cases, higher speeding concerns. And that really underlines that as we choose project and actions with the goal of giving everyone in Tigard access to safe streets, we're going to need to keep in mind where community members are overexposed now. Any questions about the equity findings?
I don't know if this is the appropriate place for it, but equity can mean so many different things. And I'm wondering if we can't have an overlay of where there's a lack in sidewalk connectivity as well as schools? Because I'm looking at a few of these, and I know there's no sidewalks, and I know there's schools nearby. And so I appreciate looking at socially vulnerable neighborhoods, but I'm wondering if we can also have two other layers, if that's possible? Because I would bet if we look at that, it'll be those two issues as well.
I think it's a good segue into the site selection, because those are components that are involved in that as well.
Sidewalk, I don't believe we have used the sidewalk completeness data. Is that a data layer that you have?
We do have that.
We can certainly incorporate that.
But we did look at more of the pedestrian demand, you know, the schools and trails.
Schools, parks, libraries, I think. We looked at key destinations that serve people of all ages and abilities. And so with that, I think if folks are comfortable with me stepping on, I could talk about how this and the other safety analysis has been fed into our developing draft recommended into our developing draft, uh, recommended priority locations. Yes?
Thank you again. I do look forward to seeing that because I'm very interested in, in, you know, we have very different appearing streets throughout the city. I do just want to back up one slide.
Yes.
Hopefully this is inappropriate, but part of what we talked about with equity is this, the speeding concern corridors. And you mentioned that, um, the Durham Road and, and Southview neighborhoods are adjacent to speeding corridors, which does appear to be true. But I disagree that, that like Bull Mountain Road is a road that's going to be used to access the Southview. That is definitely, you know, and I live there. So it's a wide road, the speed is high. My son was like, they haven't changed the signs yet, you know, because he just got his license. But that road is not used to, I don't believe, to access that neighborhood across 99. Those are very, very separate. And Bull Mountain is used to access all of that neighborhood there. And the same kind of with Guard, the next one down, that area that's red, I can very much attest that it's dangerous, very difficult to pull out of. And yes, on McDonald, that little bit there is accessing that area. But those two are, they feel very separate to me than, than those, those, those vulnerable neighborhoods. And so I'm not trying to diminish your work, but I just want to understand, either just because they're close on the map, just living here, I don't think they're accessing.
This is extremely valuable guidance for us. Thank you.
Okay.
Um, I, I was working with your neighbors in Beaverton, and, um, one of the staff there sits in the meeting, which I loved, which is, we want this project to be data-informed, not data-driven. Uh, the way we view all of this analysis that we do is a starting point for conversation because people who live in community know things about those places that we will never know just from the data we have access to. And so for you and other community members to tell us how you, um, how you interact with these corridors, with these streets, really helps us come with better recommendations and a better understanding of community context. So thank you for taking the time to share that.
I just, so for those, they definitely are like too fast and probably unsafe, but they just aren't, I don't think they're really linked to that neighborhood that much.
Thank you.
Oh, I, I guess my question would also be like, like, how are we gauging time of day? Or is that a factor at all? Like, I actually think of Durham Road as like, hey, it stops close to the high school, right? Like, that's where the speeding concern stops. Is it, you know, individuals driving to school? Or, and I know people speed otherwise, too, but is that the primary factor that Durham isn't safe? Or is it other things, right? Like, things like that I'm curious about? Or is it just like all-day Durham speeds during that time?
I'll just start. Um, just because a corridor is identified as a speeding concern, it doesn't mean that we should go out and build something there, or that there's a problem. So it's just one piece of information that we want to overlay. And so when we talk about the site selection, we're looking at these locations plus the high-risk and the high-injury networks, and then looking at where we have a lot of that overlap, and then also proximity to some of the things we talked about. So, um, just because we looked at it doesn't mean that we can't, obviously, we can't move forward every single corridor. Um, and so we have some hard decisions to make. Um, but it is a piece of valuable information. And I think, I mean, I think there are speeding concerns on Bull Mountain. Whether they're associated with a high equity need or not, I'm not 100% sure about that. Um, I don't think it's clear from the overlay of the map like it is in the Tigard Triangle. Um, but I think that is, it seemed like valuable, or it seemed like confirmation from what I've seen and heard from members of the community.
For someone who drives it all the time, yes.
So I don't want us to spend a lot of time in the weeds, but I, the Bull Mountain-Southview connection, that would butt up against Twolidy and Templeton. So in my mind, there could be, and school age families only represent 25% of the population. So not every car is taking their kiddo to, you know, winter basketball. But, um, I have seen a lot of that in you cut on Canterbury, you cut through because it's a direct, um, shop back there. So I do think there is some out-of-neighborhood traffic that can, that can be quite active, though, as it heads into the neighborhood. So I'd say there is some alignment. But to our, you know, to Council Robyn's point, it's probably not 100%, but there's definitely activity that way.
And in terms of, so as we talked about earlier, there are a couple of corridors on here where, um, we know that this, where even if we don't have a speed study, the fact that the speed is posted at 40 miles an hour above has gotten it on this list. But where we do speed studies, you typically collect speed data over a period of time. And the, the conventional way that you, you then interpret that data is you say, you look at something called the 85th percentile speed. So that's the speed at which 17 out of 20 drivers are going under that speed over that period of that speed study. And then you've got kind of that top 15%, that top three out of 20. And so that cutoff is not necessarily sensitive to time of day. You're taking from whatever period of time the speed study data was collected, which is often more extended than a 24-hour period, correct?
Yeah, so we used the speed studies that we have in our database, and they're collected either radar boxes, which most people don't notice, they're just put on a pole on the side of the road, and it just shoots a radar across the road. And that tells us the speeds and number of, of vehicles. Um, but we also sometimes do the, we hire a vendor to do the tubes, which you may have seen in the road, right across the road. So it's a combination of both of those, those pieces of information, but we usually do get a few days of data. Um, and again, these are things that when we start looking at the specific projects, um, we can dig into the details of time of day, or maybe there's one direction that has more of an issue than the other. Um, but this was looking at it at more of a, a zoomed-out scale since it was citywide.
If it's all right with the council, I would love to talk a little bit about the process that we've used to bring you some safety priorities and share those priority corridors with you for your reaction. And I appreciate that we got to start early, and I want to be sensitive to your agenda times. If we could go to the next slides, and actually, two slides ahead, please. Yes, perfect. Okay. So when we looked at how to prioritize safety locations and how to develop the data that starts the conversation, there were really three things we wanted to consider: ownership, safety needs, and how well an improvement in a location advances the goals of this plan. Next slide, please. So the first, the first thing that we looked at is ownership. The reason for this is where the city currently owns a street, or is likely to own the street in the future, in the example of Hall Boulevard, the city has the power to make its own changes. It's important to prioritize streets that are owned by partners so that the city can have a data-informed conversation with them. But the city cannot advance its own projects on a partner road. So for, uh, so for deciding where this plan is going to use its resources to develop project concepts, um, the first step was saying, let's look at all of the streets that the city owns now or is likely to own in the future. Next slide, please. So the step after that is to say, of that city-owned network, what are all the streets that have documented safety needs? So that came up on any one of those previous networks I showed you, the high-injury network, high-risk, or speeding safety concern corridors. And that gives us locations where there is a documented safety problem. So next slide. Now that we have those locations with documented safety problems that are in, that are under city ownership or will be, we looked at the goals that we brought you in, I believe it was September. Equity, protecting vulnerable road users, and creating livable communities. And we picked data points we had access to that told us how well an investment in a particular location did to advance that goal. And so that was now then used to score those eligible locations. Next slide, please. So that resulted in, um, draft scores, which, because we're data-informed and not data-driven, we then handed over to the city team and asked them for feedback and said, where do these need to be adjusted? Where is there already a project that's solving this problem? Where do we have one long corridor that needs to be broken out into pieces? And we also prepared to collect public input, to hear from the public where their priorities are. And so I believe that survey is launched today, just about to launch?
Yes, it was launched. I checked it today.
Okay, great. So that is now up online with some of the information telling people how we got to those recommendations that we've shared with you. And that survey's going to be open through the end of the month, I believe, is the plan. So next slide, and let's talk a little bit about what these locations are. So I want to draw your attention first. There are two corridors up there you're going to see are in a lighter green than the other corridors. And that is because those are two locations that rose to the top of our analysis, where the city has a program and funded project that is moving forward in the near term. So I just want to underline that even without this data, you have already been focusing on funding a number of the right locations. So setting aside those two corridors, where we think we have something advancing that can address the needs, we had 12 greater corridors that popped up as having high priority scores. And this is the list of them here. Um, I would love to hear any reactions, any input that you have on these lists. You're going to have some time to mull it over after this meeting as well, but you bring a lot of knowledge about your communities. I'd love to hear any advice that you can give us.
Yes, seeing this, sorry, this, something about number 10 is, you know, the city have just completed a major project on that road. So how can we get that road back into this list again? That's kind of disconcerting to me, so.
So that is a great question, and this is where I think it's helpful to think back about the dates of the, the safety data that we have. It's 2018 to 2022. So there are corridors on here where the city has completed a project either late in that period or after that period. And we have not yet gotten a chance to review that data. So if there are locations on here where you think we've just made improvements, and it would be a concern if those improvements did not address the safety problem that had existed, one of the things that the project can decide is, yes, let's advance this as a high priority corridor. We can take a look at the crash data that exists, and also take a look at how the design and operation of that road has changed as a result of that project, and give, and with the city staff, develop an informed opinion about, is it likely that this project you have built has already solved this problem? Or are there maybe elements that were addressed and areas where you can make a further tweak that's going to really improve safety?
Yeah, I think back to the slide that, um, that Tali showed about the preventative care, that, to comparing this to like medicine, right? You can say, well, that one just had major surgery. Well, did it have major surgery to, to correct safety specifically, right? And, um, I think it's one of those things that probably just, maybe it's just about monitoring it, going forward to see, okay, we understand that that one showed up on the list, so let's monitor to make sure that it's, it's not showing signs. Um, so that, that could be a strategy as well.
So I guess I am surprised, and maybe this is just staff maybe putting that overlay, like McDonald's not on there, and then, um, some of the quarters around the schools, um, council president, we've mentioned, Templeton, Twolidy, and then also in the Tigard Triangle, maybe it's there, but 72nd that goes all the way up, that doesn't have sidewalk connectivity. So I'm surprised those aren't on the list.
So if you look at some of the previous slides, I know that McDonald was popping up on, I think it was the high-risk network. Um, it was popping up on that. It's just when you have to whittle it down to 12, it, it has like not made, just not made that list. But I think, I mean, we know that McDonald needs, needs work, and that's why it's a program project. I'm happy to share that that project has kicked off. Um, 72nd is on that list, or is on this list. Um, I know the map is hard to, to see. Um, but this is also where community feedback, the feedback from you all is important.
And because so much of our safety analysis looks at crash data, what we don't have the ability to take into account is where there are near misses, or where there are crashes people may not have reported, um, or where there are crashes that were reported, but an injury wasn't recorded. I am someone who has lived through a life-altering injury in a crash that I'm sure was recorded as having only minor or no injuries because it wasn't clear at the time I'd been, I and other people had been injured. And so as we're collecting feedback both from you and the community, um, people have the ability when they comment on this, not just to say, of the corridors you've listed, here are my top priorities, but you missed this spot. And I think there's a spot that's more unsafe that should have made your list. Please take a second look.
I was going to ask, um, well, excited to share Monday, I guess, yes.
Monday, only yesterday.
At the, uh, Washington County Coordinating Committee, um, we approved $18.8 million in transient development tax, um, for McDonald Street. So that's a huge chunk of money, um, which is very exciting and something to celebrate. Um, so just because you brought up McDonald Street, and I wanted to jump out of my seat and thank everyone for that approval. Um, but 72nd, like, we don't have, was that just the hopeful funding that we've been going after? Because it, like, we don't have anything on the horizon that's actually going to fund 72nd. So to me, it feels really like it should be blue.
And, and I think we can, we could change the color of that. I think it, what's, what shows, I think, is that we're taking steps right now in the design process that is bringing, so we could, I wish we had a different color to show it's partially funded.
Yeah, I think what we were trying to show was that there is design effort underway. But I do agree that it would be helpful to clarify because fully funded for construction is very different than part of the design.
Exactly.
Um, the other thing that we're using this for is if we only have the time or the hours within our contract with our consultant to spend the time to develop a certain number of projects, I don't think it would be a good use of our time to design 72nd when we have a project that's already designing it. So we already have, we have that. So I think it needs to be on our list, but we don't want, we can just use what we've already developed through this other project rather than develop something else because we know that the design that we are working on is, incorporates this safe systems approach because that's what we're incorporating in every project that we're doing already.
Totally agree.
Yeah. Totally agree. But can we either then change the color or change the description? Because that says high priority locations with funded projects, and it's not funded.
Yeah, I agree with you. Do you think it'd be more clear if we said like a design project, or just, just leave it? I don't want to overcomplicate it for everybody. Is it best just to say?
Yeah, no, I actually, so I think it's actually really helpful to say, these are the safety priority locations. These are areas where we have projects started, and these are areas that we have projects funded, right? Like, so maybe even three tiers to say, we know this, we're working on this. And I actually would add McDonald, um, just to this list because it is, it's something we hear about all the time. Um, and, and to just talk, be able to talk about it in that kind of way. But I would do those three things because I think it says, hey, it's on our radar, hey, we're working on it, hey, we're going to get shovels in the ground.
I think that sounds perfect. Excellent. Okay. And I'm going to hand this over now?
Thank you, Mayor. Courtney, this is for you. Uh, when we talk about the survey and the importance of getting that feedback, particularly in the areas that were targeted, uh, surveys can be hit and miss, um, on response, particularly in, um, uh, different communities that may or may not access, um, or care to do a survey. So how are we ensuring that we have great feedback?
I know that with each phase of the project, we are doing an in-person public engagement as well. And so I know we've talked about a lot of different ideas to go to some of these different communities. So I'll, I, maybe I'll hand it over if you, if you guys have specific ideas.
Uh, well, I can say that certainly we started getting feedback last summer. We had a great event at the Farmer's Market, which drew a pretty wide cross-section of people. And so from as far back as August, we have maps with sticky notes and a whole bunch of notes we took on locations where people said, this doesn't feel safe. I've seen crashes. I've seen near misses. Please look at this place. Um, I find that with getting great engagement, it often relies on using a mix of different outreach techniques, both online and in person, over the course of a project. And right now, this survey is only the halfway point. So we're going to continue to have opportunities to talk directly with people about the locations that matter to them and why.
Ms., I appreciate that. Mrs., I appreciate the data collected to date. But what I heard it was, did we get it right? And what did you think? So I just want to make sure in this category of did we get it right, that we're accessing that before we have a set project, if that makes sense. So.
So going back to the Walnut Street, which is part of speeding concern. I guess I've heard already found a couple of community member there. They're very concerned about that Walnut Street, especially by Fowler Middle School. And I also realize, you know, that's relatively new improvement, right? But we're still seeing, we're still observing high speed. So I guess not necessarily, my question is not necessarily are we going to do anything about it? Because it's not on the location. But I'm just wondering if we have learned any lesson from the design of newer street like Walnut? It's like, you're great, you make, you know, improvements. But it doesn't seem like the improvement make the street, make people drive slower, more slowly. So going forward, are we taking lessons from newly improved street like Walnut? Saying that, hey, you know, we have bike lane, we have, finally we have sidewalks, but cars are just still driving, you know, we have speed feedback there sometimes. It's 35, but sometimes I see people drive like 49, 50. So are we taking lesson from the new these streets?
I certainly think that a first step can be for the team to work with the city and check what was the date of the speed study that identified Walnut as a speeding concern corridor? Did it happen before the project got built? And in terms of understanding, are there lessons we can take? One of the core principles of the safe systems approach is when you build an improvement, you want to monitor that location, see how things change. And so I would expect that on the strategy side, you're going to see some recommendations about continuing to gather data and verify if things are getting safer at places you have recently built projects. You're going to build projects in the future. I also want to underline that whatever emerges from this list, whatever advances, is not intended to be, these are the top safety priorities of the city forever. Nothing else makes the list. This is essentially the list where Tiffany and Courtney tell me and my colleagues, who are so great, and I love them, and I learned so much from them. Hey, go study this location and come up with a project that looks like it would improve safety and tell us in enough detail, what would we build? What's kind of an immediate version of that? And what's a longer term version of that? What's the documented performance and cost benefit of that project? And give us all the information we would need to go and put in a grant application for it. All of the underlying data that we've collected, the city's going to have. You will have the ability to re-screen, to change the factors that we happen to study to get to this set of corridors, to pull all of the safety data. And so I definitely want to make sure that you, you don't feel like not having something, get a project developed in the next six months as a part of this plan means that it's a location that isn't worth attention or doesn't deserve to improve and to be a safe street.
I'll just add one thing. Something that we're going to be doing with this project is that we knew that we wouldn't be able to include every street that we wanted to include. And so we are going to actually have a toolbox built for speeding. And so it's going to have recommendations on things that we can do to reduce the speeds in the built environment. And we can apply that toolbox to any of the streets, whether they're on that list or not. Because that was something that I, we recognized from the beginning was that, you know, I wish I could do something on all of the streets, but I know we can't. The other thing I was going to mention is just that there's a lot more openness recently to not just building to the standard cross section. And I think Walnut is a good example of that. You know, that street was built to the cross section in our city code. So there's, it was built to those standards. There's a lot more openness now to trying to think about things differently and have more protection for people walking and biking. And so that's something that we're doing with McDonald Street. We're going to be looking at a lot of, and I'm sure we will be coming to this group very soon, once we get started. But we'll be looking at a lot of different alternative designs. So not just, we will look at the cross section that's in code. But we will also look at a lot of different options to make sure that we are making it as safe for everybody.
All right, we can go to the next slide? Yeah, so I'm happy that we had that conversation about outreach and about the various types of outreach that we're doing. So just to recap on some of the more recent outreach efforts that we've done, one of which, of course, is meeting with our Tiger Transportation Advisory Committee. They provided excellent feedback and allowed us to make some slight modifications in language. So really grateful for them. And then we also had our December 9th Project Technical Advisory Committee meeting. That meeting, again, great conversation, great engagement. What we found there is that there is still a strong desire, especially from our partners, to make sure that we do try to prioritize those facilities that are not on Tiger's system. So our steps are going to be about engaging our project partners. So ODOT as well as Washington County to see about steps forward that we can actively take to help in pushing those projects along. So not just to give up on it and say, oh, that's too challenging, but to have steps in place that we can take so that we can address those very real concerns. The tabling at the December 6 tree lighting, what an amazing event, first and foremost. I was so busy the whole time. The, yeah, Santa was coming down right behind me from the fire truck. But I couldn't even turn around because there was a line of children wanting to spin the wheel. They weren't even looking at Santa. They wanted to spin the wheel. But, so it's great that we got out there because if you remember the safe systems approach, I mean, for one, it was great because people got to hear about the effort going on. But if you remember the safe systems approach, part of that is about education and about safe users. So this was a really great way for us to tap into, how do we educate people within our efforts currently on how to be safer road users and understand some of the laws and things? And the kids loved it. They absolutely loved it. We were also passing out little lights that they could clip onto their backpacks or bikes and things, kind of shedding light on safety, I guess. But in line with the tree lighting ceremony. But the kids loved it. But we also found, because parents and adults also wanted to spin the wheel and you were asking kind of some, some basic kind of safety questions. But I think what it really shed some light on is the things that we think are very common knowledge are not. And I think not saying anything about our public, that's like, we're, we do this work every day. So we think, you know, we go in thinking, oh, yeah, everybody knows this. No, 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 no. They don't. And even, even things like how we say yield the right away, right? A lot of times that's kind of like speaking over people. They like, excuse me? Like, I think it's important, this has shed a lot of light on the fact that we need to break it down into the actual behavior that's happening. So thinking more on how do you make this more something that someone can accept warmly? Instead of, oh, no, I'm on the defense because you're using technical language. So I think it's helped in how we potentially do future outreach and even in some of our questions that we ask. So great event. I look forward to future outreach. Yeah, we can go to the next slide. So next steps, we are, we could go to the next slide. We're going to be moving into the resolve phase. So you had heard a lot about the previous phase, but kind of those projects seeming to the top, right, that are filtering through, that's going to be really a part of the resolve phase. But we're also assessing our current policies and processes to see where we can put some more systemic things in place, things that would just change our everyday activity, right? So that could be our manuals, our guides, the things that we regularly use to see, is there anything in there that is restricting us from being able to do these safe things? Or is it opportunities for us to plug in more? So that we can, just on every single project that comes in, every single thing that we do, just part of like the, just part of our everyday, you know, activities. But also beginning to develop the Safe Streets Dashboard. I loved that you talked about SMART goals before. I think the dashboard can be really used to help in tracking, right, and seeing the progress. So I'm happy just to say that I think what we're developing is something that can help achieve that measurable goals that you're wanting to set. And also preparing summary sheets for the project sites. Again, something that we all can share and we all can look at, but also something that I think that the public can consume and that, again, is welcoming and not something that feels patronizing. And prepare project scopes, which Tali already mentioned, cost estimates, benefit cost ratios, looking at both short term and long term solutions. And again, continuing to think about public engagement. I know we've kind of like tossed around a lot of very interesting opportunities for public engagement. We're trying to be creative in how we tap into audiences. I know I had thrown off, like, even getting onto like the West or onto Transit and just talking to people there. But not saying that's a final, but just, I mean, nothing is off the table on how we can better engage our public. Next slide. And you can see the timeline of what we're working with. And this will be now through the end of May, beginning of summer. And again, those progress and measures along the way, which I think you all can support and we definitely want to see. I hate to see plans that go in place that don't have evaluation as part of it and don't look back and say, okay, were we effective? So I love to see that we're building this in. And this is the last slide, I believe. So do we have any questions? Yeah.
Sorry, I have so many questions. This is something I'm really passionate about. So when you mentioned a speeding toolkit, is that part of the overall overhaul of the street design standard the city will undertake? Or is that?
I believe it's going to be a separate kind of product from the plan. But I think that is, to Tiffany's point, you know, we have an opportunity to develop these strategies and policies around that. So if we want to have a strategy that says we're going to implement these speed management tools on five corridors every year, or what, I'm just making a number up. But that could be something to talk about. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I remember I asked that a while back and the response was that this is not, it's a time consuming project, right, to do a street, street design standard overhaul. So I'm just wondering, that's something we are headed towards.
Yeah, so the speed management tools could be some of those lower cost items that we talked about, like some of the quick build items. But they also could be things that are larger, you know, so.
And there are so many different speed management tactics out there. I, I used to, in my previous role in my previous life, I feel like, before here, I used to kind of take a road show around and train people on different speed management tactics to use and kind of the mix and match and how you can be effective. But there was really very little information about, again, evaluation of the effectiveness. I know that, again, I hope that we build that in because I think it will help not only us, but it will help even on the national level. Because there is so much, so little information on the effectiveness of specific speed management strategies. But there are so many that are opportunities for us. So a lot of people just streamline straight to speed humps. And, yeah, but there, I mean, vertical deflection, which that is, it's like a vertical deflection. But there are so many others out there. Shorter block sizes, horizontal deflection, which are like roundabouts. But I could go on and on about this. I geek out on this.
I sent the lunch date between the two of you.
We'll talk about how to physically slow people down.
No, yeah, I mean, orange cones, but, yeah. But I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and your willingness for public engagement because I can tell firsthand, a couple of years ago, when a member of public contacted me about traffic safety concern and Courtney and another city engineer, we, three of us went to their house and just talked. And I was like, wow, you know, our city teammates are really in this. So I really appreciate you, all of you, you know, being so engaged and so committed to this cause. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So you talked a lot about some of the projects that we want to sort of move forward with. Can you very, very briefly discuss some of the current ongoing efforts? Because I know like Beaverton's big push right now is going to be like 20 is plenty. And that was something that we did a few years ago. So I know that in terms of looking at the capillaries in the neighborhoods, that's something that we've done in the past because typically that maintenance ends up being a lot more cost effective. So just very quickly, what we're currently doing.
Do you want to talk a little bit about the 20 is plenty or efforts there?
Maybe you can reframe the, can you restate it?
What are some of the things that we're currently doing with the efforts that we've done in the recent past? Because they seem like they would be a lot cheaper than the big projects. I'm not saying we shouldn't do the big projects, but just to sort of reframe that.
Right, related to safe streets.
Correct.
Okay, perfect. So since I started at the city, there's been a lot of initiatives that are really under the Safe Streets umbrella. We didn't have a formal resolution or a plan that we had started yet. But, and the 20 is plenty was part of that. So that was, really it falls under the same umbrella of what we're doing. So it could have been an outcome, if we didn't already have it done, it could have been a strategy that we said, we want to do that. And I've seen that in other plans. But we were ahead of it and we did that already. And I've actually had a lot of other city staff ask me, you know, for a lot of advice on the program, which I thought was great because I think it was really well received. So does that, I don't know if that answers your question.
One thing I can just share as an anecdote is, early on, when we did our first engagement event back in August, I was out at a tabling event with Jessica and Courtney and Tiffany. And people were coming up saying, oh, this location concerns me. It's so hard to cross to my bus stop here. My kid has to walk here and it worries me. And there were so many of those locations where Courtney was able to say, yeah, we studied that. Here's what's going on. Or, hey, we've got a project that's in design. Or, hey, we've got a project that's funded here. And so I think one of the things I do want to underline, even though I can't speak to the specifics the way Courtney has, is you have an amazing team of staff who has been chipping away at this piece by piece, which is how you transform a city. Unfortunately, we never get the money we would need to change everything all at once. But little bit by little bit, you tweak the system until it's a safe one. And this work was already underway years before we started this plan. And it's been really nice to just help it move forward.
And then I also want to shed light on our Safe Routes to School program. That helps feed into that education piece. And we have a great, I mean, she does work in my office, but L'Oreal, she's our Safe Routes to School coordinator. And she's very active in the schools here, teaching bike and pedestrian education. But we also go after the Safe Routes to School infrastructure, more capital grants. So I think it's like we were, we were doing things, but we just didn't have it like mapped out in a plan to support us. But where a plan supports us even more, especially in a very competitive environment like we are in now, when you're going after grants, this is going to help us when it is so competitive. Not just at the, well, at the state level, at the federal level, at the regional level. So this is, this is kind of that tool to say, no, 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 we looked at it. It is our priority. Look at the report, look at the plan that we developed that confirms this. And I think that can give us a leg up. So I hope that answers. I know I kind of went off a little bit, but I hope that answers.
All right. Well, thank you so much. We look forward, thank you for all the work that you've done and presenting it. And then we look forward to you coming back to us again.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Everybody good to keep going? Anyone? You want a cupcake? Okay, feel free to get a cupcake. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the City Manager Report with interim City Manager Drake. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be very brief tonight. For the public listening, there in the next couple of days, there's some extremely cold weather coming our way. there in the next couple of days, there's some extremely cold weather coming our way, and people should watch for snowfall and freezing, freezing weather and ice. And suggest that people look at local news and be aware of where it's going to be and how often, because it may not get above freezing on Thursday and maybe into Friday. So just a fair warning there. Secondly, in terms of public involvement, the internal budget process has started here in the city, and that's basically what I've been doing in the last seven days since I've been here, is budget. But the public can be involved in this process and see what we're doing as a city, what we're recommending, what the council adopts, and what people can comment. And I'd advise people to look at the city website, and there will be opportunities for people to attend and participate, which, working with this council just a short time, but watching them over time, does support public involvement. So please participate. Lastly, a little bragging about the teamwork here in Tigard. The library teammates, as they call one another, secured a grant, funding from the state library to purchase hardware, software, furniture to improve the ability, to improve technology services to patrons with disabilities. And that's a really big thing to a small group of folks, but very significant. Secondly, in the last few weeks, the library has been a venue for the ARP Tax Aid volunteers, working out of the library and providing free tax service to seniors and others. And it goes a long way to providing a really important service, and the city has done this in the past. And just last year, the library was the busiest ARP Tax Aid site in the state of Oregon. And that brings something very significant, no cost, to a large segment of the population and a very specific population. And there were 821 bookings of working with people on their taxes, and that's really significant. But they don't have to go far to get the help. So Halsted is not here, but thank you, Halsted and team, for being so helpful. So that's it from me, and thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it is tax season, so, you know, I don't know, it's already February. The next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding proposed legislation, and we have Assistant City Manager Trich to help us through this item. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Council. We'll move quickly through a few legislative items. As you know, legislative session at the state level has started at the end of January. About 3,200 bills have dropped, thanks to your guidance received last fall. The professional staff has had clear direction on the city's position for a number of the bills relevant to the city of Tigard. I want to discuss with you three bills where your direction would be appreciated. What I'd like to ask of you this evening is to provide direction in the form of support, oppose, or neutral, or no action is welcome as well, on the three bills I present before you today. We have several teammates, including our consultant from CFM, who's joining us virtually, should you have any questions. We provided some information in the materials on the bills to be discussed, including the introduced language and staff recommendation. I'd like to begin with SJR 3. This pertains to property taxation. This bill proposes bringing a measure to the voters to reassess the maximum assessed value of properties at the time of sale, up to 75% of real market value. When a, so when a property is sold, in brief, when a property is sold, it can be reassessed up to 75% real market value. If you have any questions, our Finance Director, Eric Kang, would be available to help you with those.
Yeah, I think, thank you. If I am remembering, the recommendation is neutral. It can, I think because it's before us, there are probably some questions. So any background on the recommendation would be helpful. I think you can just assume that on all of them.
Okay.
So please be ready.
Good evening. Mayor and Council, for the record, Eric Kang, Finance Director. So for staff's position on this measure, or joint resolution, we've put our position as neutral, primarily as, you know, there is always going to be a need for additional revenue for the city. However, this is an impact directly to all of our community members and their personal pocketbook. We felt like this was a position that we didn't want to take a position on. Sorry, I just, I need to rewind that a little bit. But we want to bring it forward to, to Council's awareness that this is on the legislature to form an opinion on.
Can I just ask, is this because it would disproportionately affect those who are purchasing homes in Tigard and then, I think, actually increase the disparity between what our community members are paying as far as next-door neighbors who probably have similar values?
That, partially, yes. So I guess the real impact of this is, so if you have like a home that, that's, we've had a, that you resided in for a long period of time, you know, you're well aware of the limitations on assessed value increases. And so in turn, this would give the opportunity for that sold home to be reassessed at the time of sale, bring it up to, closer to what real market values are.
So why is that a bad thing? Right? Because this bill allows that, right?
Correct.
So I guess I'm confused why it would be neutri, I guess this is a much bigger conversation over Measures 5 and 50 and the fact that we are supporting that the legislature take a look at it. But this seems like a piece of the pie that could start to address the issue.
This, this would be a start to addressing the issues of Measure 5 and 50, correct.
Counselor Schlag.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to clarify one point, because when I was reading through it, yes, there is that component of reassessment at the time of sale or transfer of a property, but there also looked to be a phase-in approach that I interpreted for existing, you know, owners of properties, basically saying that we don't want the ratio of, let me check back here, maximum assessed value to real market value. We don't want that ratio to be less than 0.75, and there would be a phase-in over a five-year period to ensure that no property, even if the transaction doesn't take place, you know, meets that criteria. Is that, am I understanding that portion correctly?
I think I would defer that over to our experts. I'm not...
I was just going to say, Ryan or Zach, are you there?
I am here. And Counselor, can you repeat that question? Sorry.
Of course. So does the five-year phase-in of the ratio component of this proposal apply only to properties that are being sold or transferred in any way, or does it apply to all properties regardless of that sale or transfer, if a sale or transfer does not take place?
Taking myself up, me too. Counselor, my understanding is that it only applies to properties that are sold, in reading the language. And, you know, if there are tax and finance policy experts in the room, I would defer to them. But, but my reading of it is that it would only apply to sold properties.
Just two points. So actually, I support the question that the mayor brought up, is I feel we're in a bit of a quandary to say, yes, let's go after 5 and 50. This is a step toward this, and then we step back. My question that I sent forward to Assistant Manager Trich was, and I know there's no perfect scenario, Eric, for you to calculate. So we get good news because the, you know, and we're often saying, our property tax rate is so low. This is an assistant to it. So, but what is the impact on the public safety levy as that gap shrinks? But then what's the gain on the general real tax collection? So maybe it's a net, which then makes me think we should support it because we can't say, we want reform, this is a step in that direction, and then we remain neutral. But I still kind of sit with, do we have any magic numbers that tell us the fiscal impact to the levy or the gain to the real tax, if that makes sense? Thank you.
We don't have any fiscal numbers currently, but that might be something that we could follow up on.
Yeah, thank you. And to Council President Wolf's point, I think that'd be really important in order to make the determination if we were going to stay neutral or not. And then this is going on to the ballot, correct? So it's going to be up to the voters at the end of the day.
Okay. So I, yeah, Counselor Gudusi?
And one thing that's sort of brought to mind is that sort of increased tax revenue and greater fiscal autonomy may outweigh the potential affordability concerns. And one of the issues with that reassessed value is all of a sudden, the people that then want to buy that new property are going to have to pay that higher tax. That said, there have been a lot of people that have been concerned that we continue to need levies. So having that increased tax base may be another way to go.
It's a web. It's a web that a lot of different cities are figuring out different ways to bandage it together. And I think, yeah. So I think perhaps more information is needed to decide between neutral and support. Okay. Do you feel like you have the guidance you need for the information we need? Excellent. Okay.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the easy topic of tolling, it gets much simpler. So we have two bills for your consideration pertaining to tolling. The first one is House Bill 2931. The proposed act makes changes to laws about the Interstate 5 Bridge Project and tolling. The staff recommendation here is for support because our read of the language in this bill is that it would provide a way forward to use existing tolls to pay for potential new tollway projects. And it may support our position as a city in managing congestion or investment in infrastructure into the future. But happy to take any questions. And we also have Principal Transportation Planner, Eric Gurkey, who's available to field questions as well.
Can I come up and just talk a little bit?
Okay, great.
You need to, yeah, and can you introduce yourself? Yep, I'm Tiffany Gurkey. I'm the Principal Transportation Planner for the city of Tigard. So in order to establish a toll, it still would require the, like, you would still have to go through Oregon Transportation Commission. That process would still be in place with the changes to the bill, right? But what this leads to is, in the establishment of the I-5 toll, any revenue streams from that, of course, will go to the I-5, the I-5 Bridge replacement or the bridge project. But also to go to operating cost of the toll way itself, but also it can be transferred to a, according with the changes to the bill, to a general toll fund that can go into studying other toll, potential toll facilities or any like future projects for future tolls. So kind of is a rev, it's a potential revenue stream if tolling on other facilities is determined and is accepted, of course, and approved by Oregon Transportation Commission, still through that process. But it just provides additional revenue streams when we know, we know that Oregon, especially ODOT, is facing a lot of funding challenges. My recommendation for support is to have a tool in the tool chest. Let's not remove a tool that is, that is potentially in front of us.
What are other ways in which projects would be funded to look at, you know, say, the I-5 Bridge toll that happens, and then they're looking at tolling the rest of I-5? And you're saying that this would then provide, in theory, funding for that study?
For the study, yes.
If the funding didn't exist, where would the money for the study come from?
They'd have to try to find the funding elsewhere, which we all know in the limited revenue streams, that doesn't really, I don't, I don't see where they're finding, where they're getting that. I mean, who knows with potential after this legislative cycle? Maybe miraculously, they have other solutions. But we know that they've tossed around ideas for, for increasing gas tax. They've tossed around ideas for increasing registration fees. And they've tossed around just like various little bits here and there, even the road user charges. But as far as the technology that exists, our understanding is that the technology does not exist to be able to really widespread, like, have that road user charge be a viable solution for us right now. So I, I think that, again, just considering the shortcomings as far as the budget deficits at ODOT, and that we want to make sure we still have revenue streams coming in. And when all of our revenue streams are being absorbed by a lot of these major interstate projects, because as ODOT's primary concerns, we're not seeing the love on Hall Boulevard. We're not seeing the love on some of our other facilities because their funds are going to those major interstate projects.
But this bill doesn't necessarily indicate that those funds would then go to those projects. It would be to fund the study, to toll other projects.
It'd be a fund, it would go to a fund that makes tolling additional facilities that would then pay for themselves, kind of, right? It would potentially, for instance, I'm not saying, well, I'm not saying that hypothetically, right, hypothetically, it went into a fund and it funded I-205 or, or 205 or whatever. But then, that toll would then be collected on that facility to then fund any upgrades and improvements that that facility needed, taking a lot of the other funds, making a lot of the other funds that are, you know, were previously being absorbed by that project, that can now be used for other facilities.
Does anyone have any other questions before I, yes, Zach?
Thanks, Mayor. Maybe I can provide a little bit of additional context for what Tiffany was saying there. So when they, when they set up the I-5 program, or the Interstate Bridge Replacement Program, they will toll that to pay parts of the cost. You know, we've secured some money from the feds, the state has put in some money, Washington has put in money. There's a delta there that's going to be paid for by tolling. As part of House Bill 2017, from 2017, if those of you who are around will remember, they included congestion pricing on both the Rose Quarter section and then I-205 at Abernathy. And that is essentially what's going to be paid for, you know, out of that tolling program. And so this would, as Tiffany said, it gives them another tool in the toolbox to fund some of that initial research and development of those additional tolling, you know, if we implement at some point a region-wide tolling infrastructure. This could be used potentially to cede that a little bit. There are, if you look at the bill, there's, there's a number of other existing funding sources for it. So this is not the sole funding mechanism. It just gives them some flexibility to move some of the monies that are collected via the Interstate Bridge Replacement Toll Program that will be going into effect into this fund, which then can fund some of the additional potential tolling infrastructure, or tolling programs throughout the region.
Thank you. Counselor Schlag?
Thank you. And Zach, just so I understand, so if there are additional revenues that aren't paying for the existing toll system and IBR, those dollars would then go to the Rose Quarter and to 205?
Counselor, not necessarily, but that is in the realm of possibility. So there's no directive saying they will go directly from here. They go to that tolling fund, which has a whole long list of allowable uses there that include development of research towards, studies towards new tollways in the state.
Great, thank you. I missed that long list, and I thought I saw everything on the ledge side. And then another question is, is there IBR federal funding in jeopardy given what's happening at the federal level under our new administration? given what's happening at the federal level under our new administration?
I don't know if that question is directed towards me, but that is far, 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 far above my pay grade to answer.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I saw it was in jeopardy. That's why I'm asking that it was a potential not to be funded. But that's just one of many projects. Thank you.
Counselor Gadducey?
One of my concerns with this is that it seems to be, you know, inequitably targeting those that aren't able to work from home or maybe, you know, within the working class. So it becomes difficult for me to, you know, have a firm position of supporting it just because of that.
Yeah. And I think that comes down to the way tolls are collected, right, and also the facilities that are prioritized for toll collection, right? But thankfully, again, I don't, this does not override the process of approval to have the Oregon Transportation Commission approve that toll facility to be put in place. But again, I think as far as where we're concerned, I mean, aligning, well, especially where I'm, when I'm looking at tolling facilities, I'd like to see high-capacity transit that's aligning that, right? So that, for one, you could see that there is an alternate option, right? But I think there's other things that can be put in place when it comes to how tolls are collected to put kind of equity needs in consideration or build that into even the fee structure.
I will share that I could be neutral, but I actually would oppose this. And I oppose it because I think, I sat on a lot of tolling conversations in the region over the last couple of years. And I think one of my primary concerns is moving money from one area to another when you're trying to pay for, you're saying tolls are to pay for something, and then you're going to go do stuff over here with it. So I think about, like, what the impact would be if, for instance, we were told on I-5, and we have a whole bunch of stuff that we know our roads are going to get clogged because people are going to divert off of it. And instead, potentially, if paying for projects to make our roads that are now clogged with people avoiding I-5 safer, they could take some of that money and go spend it to go study and toll somebody else. And I think that if you are specifically tolling, and this is something where, like, Oregonians are very passionate about tolling. And I think it's a situation, if you're saying you're going to charge someone and you're tolling them to pay for the bridge, then it needs to pay for the bridge, and it needs to pay for projects around the bridge, and not move money around to different areas. So for me, I would be neutral, or I would oppose, but I cannot support it.
Zach?
All right, Mayor and Counselors, before you all head too far down this road, I did want to bring something to your attention. And kind of, and this is partly on me for reading it differently the second time through. So, I don't know if you all have the bill language in front of you, but on Page Five, lines 42 through 45, it establishes, so it authorizes the transfer of funds from the I-5 Bridge tolling account to the tolling program. And then section, or subsection K there, where money is transferred to the toll program fund from the Interstate Bridge, Interstate Five Bridge toll account to pay costs. So this limits those funds that are transferred from the I-5 Bridge toll account to the general toll account to just being expended for the toll account. ODOT's reasoning for this is first, simply a housekeeping measure because they have to funnel all the funds through this existing toll program account. So that it is moving funds from the I-5 account to the tolling account. The funds that are moving, moved from the I-5 account to the tolling account are only able to be expended on Interstate Five Bridge Replacement-related issues. So, I just, that is a major point of clarification as we move forward in this discussion. And sorry, I was just sitting here reading the staff measure summary and realizing that I was not connecting the dots on that for you.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I read it differently.
So, all the dollars raised go directly to ODOT to manage this project. So there's not money that can be dispersed to potentially go to adjacent roads that may be impacted by a toll, correct, Zach? So it's, 100% goes to ODOT to manage this toll road?
Subsection K requires all the dollars that are put in from the Interstate Bridge tolling fund to be spent on the Interstate Bridge infrastructure and tollway. Yes.
Great, thank you. And my understanding, was this Governor Kotex's bill directly on behalf of ODOT, the Oregon Department of Transportation? Or do we know who sponsored this?
It is. And it is, it is, ODOT's testimony is that it is essentially technical cleanup to align the language with Washington and, you know, make sure that we're all in alignment with, as these funds start to come in, as we start to collect funds, that we have our, you know, our Ts crossed and our Is dotted, essentially.
So, I think that's where, because they added clarification about what the toll general fund could be used for. And that was established in here. So, thank you again, Zach, for that clarification. That Item K kind of removes that concern that you brought up about moving the funds around, which I apologize for misleading anyone.
I think I'm even more confused than before. Anyone else, or is it just me?
My feeling is no position on this particular piece of legislation.
I think we should be neutral. So, when you said what you said, I agreed with that. But seeing this clarification, that this sounds like it's really just kind of a cleanup of where the funds would go and what they would be used for. It's not saying we will or won't toll. It's just saying that once we do toll the bridge, that money only, it has to go into this fund, but then it can still only be used for the bridge. Is that correct?
That item that he brought up, thank you, Zach, made it so that's a stipulation.
Yeah. So, so, don't, the bridge is fairly far away, so people probably won't duck off into Tigard to avoid that toll. And it doesn't sound like it's authorizing tolling further south on I-5. Is that correct?
Yeah, no.
Okay. So I think we'd just be neutral.
Counselor Schlag?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question on no position versus neutral. Is there any meaningful difference in that there? Okay, cool. I thought I heard that as a fourth option, which is why I use that language.
It's the same thing, I think, just not getting involved.
Right. It's whether advocates will say Tigard is neutral or just walk away.
Fair enough.
And this doesn't preclude you from coming back, should, because oftentimes there's amendments to bills, and you come back and say, this is actually going to be favorable to Tigard, or we want you to reconsider. You'll come back to us.
And if, for instance, that language K gets changed, we could bring it back and say, actually, they removed it, or they modified it. And we now know that's a trigger. So, it's actually good that that was brought up.
It looks like neutral is agreed upon. Okay, excellent. Thank you. Please don't go far.
Yeah, the next one's on tolling, too.
This one is a little bit different. I'd like to draw your attention to Senate Bill 925. The language of this bill prohibits the Oregon Transportation Commission from establishing a toll on Interstate 205. And the staff recommendation is neutral, acknowledging that this, the difference with this one is that it's actively prohibiting future tolling. So removing that tool from that toolbox.
I think this one speaks for itself. Yeah, I think this one speaks for itself. By, I think by saying this, we might set precedent for certain regions to kind of back out of a potential tool for funding, which we, right now, long-term funding strategies are a little uncertain again. So, again, not encouraging us to, right out of the gate, remove options.
Can you remind me what our position was on this one, or do we have a position?
Neutral.
Neutral, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I would certainly not advocate that we support this, because I do think we are taking something off the table that may, in the long run, need to be on the table. And I agree, we'd start bifurcating the state between those that are very active in the legislature and those that may not be. So, I would recommend we just stay at a neutral position.
Neutral's good with me. I think there's probably a lot of passion about this for our neighboring communities that are along 205. So, but I think for Tigard, neutral makes sense. Counselor who?
I'm just worried about the potential impact, you know, if we, we don't allow tolling on 205, how is that going to look, you know, so they're going to look at other places like 217. So, I will actually oppose this, this measure.
I think neutral is primarily the consensus of council. So, we will be neutral.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If counsel has any other questions about legislative items or anything that you've heard about or that you need from us, I hope you'll reach out and let us know.
I'll be super fast. So, on 3115, then you just come back with that as hopefully I support the advocacy to get clarity. That's what I'm hearing. So I just appreciate that and look forward to further updates if there's amendments or clarity around that. Thank you.
Anything else around legislative positions? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. We have no non-agenda items and no executive session scheduled. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. We are adjourned. Good night, Tigard.